Called order the Board of County Commissioners regular meeting for July, June 25th, 2015. Welcome, everybody. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance and the Salute to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the ZS and the Department of French, and the Department of National Defense.
There's a few, there's a few more chairs available. There's one here in the front, couple right there. If you guys can make your way to a chair. We do have occupancy restrictions, however, we have made arrangements where you can hear everything outside. To keep it from reverberating, we'll have to keep the doors closed, however. Okay. We're going to, the next item on the agenda is approval of the regular meeting agenda, and we're going to make some changes to accommodate the crowd today. We are going to go through public input. That would be public input on anything that is not on the agenda. Then we'll have a public hearing discussing the potential growth of the County Commission Board to five members. And at that time, we're going to move Item CC, which is to approve or not approve Resolution R 1517. I assume that's what most of you are here for. We will, at that time, hold a hearing on that item and that item alone. After that, I think it will be appropriate to take a short recess so we can all maybe go to the bathroom, get a cup of coffee, whatever we need to do, and we can allow the room to clear out, because I'm assuming most of the rest of you are not here to understand, to make sure we approve minutes and expenditure reports. So, Madam Manager, are there any further changes that need to come on the agenda?
No, sir.
I'll take a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second. All those in favor, signal five and say an aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay. At this time, we are accepting public input. During this portion of our meeting, we welcome your suggestions and want to hear your concerns. This is not a question and answer period. Speakers will be limited to five minutes. Any individual who would like to discuss an item in more depth may request to be placed on a future agenda. Request forms are available in the County Manager's office. You just need to see Denisha, and she can get you a form. So, is there any public input on any item that is not on the agenda? Okay. We'll move to the public hearing. This is a discussion of proposed ordinance to increase the size of Board of Grant County Commissioners to five members pursuant to Article X, Section 7 of the New Mexico Constitution to be considered at the July 23rd, 2015 Commissioners Meeting. And we have somebody from Research and Polling that's going to give us a little presentation. Come on up.
Good morning.
There you go.
There we go.
Try again.
One of these days I'll learn. Hi, well, good morning. My name's Michael Sharp. I'm a Vice President at Research and Polling, and we have been asked by the county to come up with a number of plans for the County Commission's consideration with respect to going from three districts to five. And the plans are off to the right on the easels, the current districts, and then Plans A, B, and C. We've already gone through in much detail the plans themselves in the previous two meetings, and so today, I just wanted to give you a quick overview of the process that we've gone through, and then open up to any questions that you may have. So, when going from three districts to five districts, it's a pretty big change, and the purpose of these plans is to show you that the changes can be pretty substantial. You're looking at going from three to five, and taking population from those three districts and basically put it into other five districts, and you end up with plans that look quite a bit different. In three districts, every, with three districts, every district is supposed to have about 9,800 people in every district. With five districts, you're looking at every district, one, two, three, four, and five, having roughly 5,900. So, when you're going from 98 to 5,900, that's almost 4,000 people that your current districts are losing, have to be distributed to other districts. When redistributing that population, we made sure that every, every one of the five districts in the, in the plans, A, B, and C, were equal in population, roughly about 5,900 people. We had to conform to precinct boundaries so that we wouldn't split them between districts to assist the clerk and the voters in avoiding any sort of voter confusion. We've had so far two public meetings on this particular topic, the plans themselves, and we've discussed the plans, discussed the redistricting guidelines, discussed the plans in general. All the plans meet the legal and constitutional requirements of redistricting, population-wise, continuity, excuse me, contiguity, compactness, voting rights, and communities of interest. Today is the third public meeting on this particular topic. It's just an opportunity for me to review the process for the commission and the public, and also to take any additional questions that you may have. The next meeting, as the Chair already mentioned, is on July 23rd, where this particular topic, going from three to five commissioners, is, is on the agenda, and it could be voted on. And then the topic of going, choosing the plan could also be addressed at that particular meeting, but may not. And so, basically, that's, that's my overview. I tried to keep it short but sweet, and just to give you a quick idea of what's happened so far, and, and just to open up to these sorts of questions that you may have. So, if you have any questions, feel free to ask.
Does the Commission have any questions?
I don't.
Okay. So, I think what we'll do is open it up to audience comments. You'll be on hand to, to help us answer any questions?
You bet.
Okay. Thank you very much. So, at this time, we will open it up, and I think we will, seeing the size of the agenda today, we'll hold this to a two-minute comment period. If, is there any person in the public that would like to speak on this issue? Yes, sir. Please introduce yourself for the record.
May I give my card to?
Denisha?
Sure. Uh huh. Can you hear me?
We can.
Great. My name is John Song. I'm co-chair of the Grant County Food Policy Council, Citizens Advisory County Council that's been appointed by the members of the Commission. And I'm here to speak in favor of the five-member commission plan. We've had considerable discussion for well over a year in the council, and in part of our community conversations, it's been discussed. And as you know, the, the population of the county is about the same as it was when I lived here before in the 70s and early 80s. It's just that population has redistributed out into the rural areas. So, a five-member commission makes a lot of sense to give more representation to that population compared to the current redistricting plan. We feel that in terms of the, that there is a renewed interest in small farming, small agriculture in the county, and a five-member commission would be able to address the interests of these small farmers that are starting up, and we would like the Commissioners to approve a five-commission-member plan. It looks like pretty much that Plans A, B, and C would give representation to the areas that would encompass these small farmers. And I would just ask, I wasn't here for the other two meetings, and I would just ask, the difference in the numbering on Plans A, B, and C, could Research and Polling explain that one more time?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate your work.
Fine. Okay. Again, thank you for that question. In terms of the numbering between A, B, and C, I guess what I tried to do in order to, first of all, with districts one, two, and three, what I tried to do to avoid some sort of, to avoid some confusion was to assign districts one, two, and three and to, to the Commissioner that happened to live in that district. So, Commissioner One, who represents District, District One lives in that district, Commissioner represents District Two, is in District Two in all the plans, and Commissioner represents District Three, is in District Three in all the plans. District Four and Five, those are the new districts, and the numbering, there's no real, I guess, it's kind of arbitrary in terms of what number you choose to give which district. In districts, just example, districts A and B, you'll notice that District Five, right in the middle, in Plan A, blue, and that's the exact same district as District Four in Plan B. I just wanted to show that because they're new districts, they can be assigned to whatever number you wanted, really. So, does that answer the question? Hopefully?
Someone did.
Well, I can clarify anything you need to.
Is there a, so you said like Five and Four are exactly the same?
Between Plans A and B. Right.
And so, it's just a matter of boundaries? Is that the difference between all four? Maybe just some slight tweaking of the boundaries?
That's right. The boundaries are different, because once again, you're adjusting for that, losing almost 4,000 people from the original districts. And then from there, just trying to move the precincts from one district to another to make sure the population balances. And then the differences are just to give the Commission different looks on what the districts could look like.
So, if I may, what you're saying is in District One, that's where Commissioner Ramos lives?
That's correct.
District Two is where I live, and District Three is where Commissioner Hall lives in all three plans.
That's correct.
Okay. I understand. Thank you very much.
Just one more comment. I think the only thing I've heard is people commenting on C, and I think it's District Four, the configuration of that and how it lies, it's that little sliver that goes up between the others. There was some question about that, and then plus the citizens who live out on the ridges compared to the citizens who live in the northern part of that district. It's the only question I've had on any of them.
Is there any further public comment on a five-person commission? Yes, ma'am. Come on up.
Ronnie Suhelzner, Pinos Altos. I am new to this issue, just having looked at the boards this morning, but a few thoughts. It seems to be a numbers game, rather than really looking at what are the, what's the diversity of our county, and how can we best represent those diverse lifestyles and commonalities? It surprised me that no alternative includes Silver Acres in with Silver City, when it seems to be a bedroom community that is more tied to Silver City than it is to Tyrone. One of the alternatives does include Pinos Altos with Little Walnut and Cottage San, and intuitively, that kind of makes sense, because we're all on these little flowing roads that lead to Silver City. We have some separate, in Pinos Altos, we have some separate interests from Cliff and Gila, separate lifestyles, commutes and that kind of thing. And including Pinos Altos with Little Walnut is consistent with the fire protection district boundaries. So, a recommendation or suggestion could be to have Plan C that also adds Silver Acres to Silver City. Or perhaps some other new alternative that looks at Silver City and Silver Acres together. I'm not clear why we went from three to five as opposed to three to four or some other number, but I support having representation for diverse common interests of our diverse Grant County. Thank you.
Is there any further public comment?
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Donna Stevens, and I am here representing myself only. And I would like to see a five-member commission, because then maybe I'll get some representation on this commission. Thank you.
James Baldwin, District Three, County resident. As with Ms. Stevens, I am speaking for myself, myself only. To go to a five-person commission is going to cost money. Where is the money coming from?
It's your time to talk. Talk all you want.
I'm sorry?
It's your turn to talk. Talk all you want.
Okay. I will.
We've got about three minutes.
All right. The title of this is Discussion, and according to my dictionary, right here, discussion involves conversation. It's not a one-way conversation, it's a two-way, unless you want to hide where the money's coming from. We have an extra $50,000 for each of the new Commissioners, if they are appointed. This is for discretionary spending. The three of you have $50,000. So, where is the extra $100,000 for discretionary spending coming from? Discussion, the dictionary.
That was answered to you a few meetings back already, and we, we pretty much thought that 150 would stay out there, and it'd just be divided amongst the five. I mean, yeah, 150 would be amongst the five, so, I mean, there wouldn't be any extra monies that we would need for that purpose that you're talking about. So, if we had a five-man commission, it'd go to $30,000 each.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ramos, for answering my question. The next part of it is, where does the salary and the benefits come from?
That will be budgeted in this time, the budget will be done this time next year. So, really, the salary of right under $25,000, I believe, and all that will come into next years, but not next year, year after that's budgeted.
I feel that with the three of you, or with the three that we've had since I started attending these meetings in the old courthouse, that I have been represented well, as well as I want to be. If I have a concern, I go to my Commissioner, or I speak to one of the other Commissioners about it, or I go to the county personnel. I don't believe, in my mind, that I want to pay for big government. We, I'd like to see us stay small and friendly. Bigger government, well, why have five? Let's have seven. Seven would be so much better, and that's bigger government. I don't want big government. I want small government that I can handle.
Three or five, that's the only options there are. The only options are three or five.
At this moment.
True.
Think small, think three, and think inexpensive. Thank you, gentlemen.
Further comment? Francis.
Good. Thank you, Commissioners. Good to see you. Thank you so much. I am Frances Foscus. I am the Chair of the Grant County Democratic Party. On Sunday, June 14th, the Grant County Democratic Party held an open meeting to discuss the potential five-member Grant County Commission. The consensus was that Map C best fulfills the four key congressional mandates of equal population, minority voting rights, contiguity, and compactness. Just to recap, in May, Shelby Hallmark, representing and speaking for the Grant County Democratic Party, spoke to you expressing our support of your formal consideration of the expansion of the Grant County Commission to five members. It is our belief that expanding to five Commissioners will provide greater access to the body by the, by the residents of the county, more openness and breadth of discussion in commission deliberations, and a general improvement in the representation of the various localities and groups in the county. The current three districts are large and necessarily must combine disparate communities. Moving to five districts should allow for more compact and logical subdivisions, and will, by definition, make for a smaller cohort for each Commissioner to represent. Thank you for the opportunity to express our views.
Thank you, Frances.
Thank you, Frances. Appreciate it.
Further comment? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Starbowski, resident of Silver City and in Commission Hall's district. Just a question, because I only became aware of this recently as well. Are these going to be posted? Are they posted on the Grant County website? Will they be? Yeah, I really strongly recommend that. It gives people a little more opportunity to go there and actually examine more closely. It would be a real service.
They've been in the lobby, they've been in the lobby for three months. Three months.
Okay. I understand that.
Sometimes they're easier to see than online.
Oh, I'm sure they've been out there, but what I'm saying is that I think we all acknowledge now that digital information is more readily accessible to people at times convenience.
Agreed.
Okay. So, that would be a real service. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Linda Pafford. I live in Lower Members. I'll try to keep my comments brief. First off, Mr. Hall, my bad. I have been talking to Brett, but obviously not to you. The reason for the five-man commission board is simply...
Be careful, it might be a woman.
That's right.
Five-person.
You're, you're correct. Five-person. I stand corrected. Commission is because we have increased in population since the commission was established, and a state law does give us the option to have these smaller groups represented by our Commissioners. I would like to express my preference for Plan C. It is not a perfect plan. It does not meet all the things I would wish to see, but it does tend to keep downtown intact, which the other two do not. And it separates Pinos Altos from Gila Cliff, and they are very disparate populations. If we are going to increase representation, we need to avoid lumping huge bunches of people together that have different needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Further public comment today? Yes, ma'am.
My name's Candace Mead. I'm a Silver City resident, and whether it's a three-person commission or a five-person commission, if you should vote for the JPA today, maybe we need five or three new Commissions.
Okay. If you're going to talk, I'm going to give you a lot of time to talk about that next, so let's stick to the subject. Is there anybody else that would like to talk about this subject? Okay. Oh, go ahead, Kyle.
I would advocate for a five-man commission. I think that the present structure, and particularly the present composition of this commission...
Just don't like it.
No, not a bit. Not a bit.
Appreciate standing up.
Right. No, I, yeah, I wouldn't want there to be any confusion in that regard.
I totally understand.
Right.
Your mic's off, so you can sit down now.
Right. Oh, my mic's off, and I can sit down now?
Yes, sir. I'm not talking on the subject, Kyle. Please sit down.
I am talking. Can I address you on the subject?
No. We're done here. We're going to move to the next item, and then you can talk a bunch. Okay. Is there any further comment on the five-person commission today?
Did I just understand you said that he needed to stay on the subject, and when he did, you said it's now closed? Did I hear that right?
Is there any further comment on the five-person commission today? Seeing none, we're going to move on to the public comment.
Did you all do that that way?
Public decorum here. Okay.
Wow.
Next item on the agenda, we're going to move to CC. This is approve or disapprove Resolution R 1517, a resolution approving the joint powers agreement to create a New Mexico unit of the Central Arizona Project pursuant to the Arizona Water Settlements Act. So, rather than how we normally do this, we're going to hold public comment first, and then we will go to staff comment, and we'll go to Commissioner comments. Before we get started, there's a little bit of information I was going to let you guys know, is the cap agreement has been signed by eight, the resolution has been signed by eight members already. So, the cap agreement is basically in place. Us voting today for it or against it does not keep it from happening. What, what we're voting on today is whether or not we want to have a say in what happens. And I would appreciate comments directed to the cap agreement directly that would help us make up our mind, because I can tell you right now, our minds not made up. You, if you watched her, we're here for the, the work session. We spent close to an hour and a half asking questions of various people, whether it be the planner, the attorney, the manager, and some people in the audience also. So, with that being said, if we can do this in an orderly fashion, can you stick to a couple of minutes? And please speak directly to the cap agreement and the resolution to sign it. It would help us out a lot. Thank you very much. Allison, please.
Good morning. Chairman Caston and Commissioners, I'm Allison Civic, Executive Director of the Gila Conservation Coalition, and thank you for the opportunity to make public comment this morning. The Gila Conservation Coalition has serious concerns with the JPA to form the New Mexico Cap Entity. Section 3, Representatives and Warranties, Subpart B, states that, quote, "Parties warrant that they are committed to beneficially using the water available to New Mexico pursuant to both the Colorado River Basin Project Act of 1968 and the AWSA," unquote. By signing the JPA, Grant County is committing county residents to a diversion project that could cost us $1 billion to design, construct, operate, and maintain. The Value Study Workshop led by the Bureau of Reclamation last week confirmed the billion-dollar cost estimate for construction and operations, maintenance, and replacement costs. Even phasing of the diversion will cost three times more than the AWSA subsidy of $100 million, looking at the top three ranked alternatives from the Value Study. The $110 million Phase Diversion Project, ranked number six, doesn't work. It doesn't meet the needs for Phase 1. According to the Bureau of Reclamation, its functionality is questionable. The same alternative doesn't work even in Phase 3. I've heard the justification that we need to sign on to the JPA to support irrigators in the Cliff Gila Valley, and that's why we need this diversion project. I agree that we need to improve the reliability of water delivery for irrigators, but I don't support building a billion-dollar diversion and expecting taxpayers to pay for a project that primarily benefits Freeport-Mackemern, the largest land... They're the largest land and water rights holder in the Cliff Gila Valley. They own 70% of the land and water rights, and the large, and they're the largest publicly traded copper company in the world. Freeport already owns about 11,000 acre-feet of water rights in the valley, and nearly half of them are unused every year. There are lower-cost alternatives to help irrigators with their water issues, and a billion-dollar diversion is not the one and only solution, as some would have you believe. So, the bottom line is the diversion project's too expensive, the New Mexico Unit Funds are not sufficient to cover the cost of a phased project, and certainly not sufficient to cover a fully built-out $1 billion diversion project. According to the JPA in Section 5S, once the New Mexico Unit Funds are gone, that's it from the ISC and the State of New Mexico, the JPA relieves them of any responsibility to provide funding to the New Mexico Unit beyond the $100 million AWSA subsidy. So, who picks up the tab? It's the local communities that will cover any shortfall... half of them are unused every year. There are lower-cost alternatives to help irrigators with their water issues, and a $1 billion diversion is not the one and only solution as some would have you believe. So, the bottom line is the diversion project's too expensive, the New Mexico unit funds are not sufficient to cover the cost of a phased project, and certainly not sufficient to cover a fully built-out $1 billion diversion project. According to the JPA in Section 5S, once the New Mexico unit funds are gone, that's it from the ISC and the State of New Mexico, the JPA relieves them of any responsibility to provide funding to the New Mexico unit beyond the $100 million AWSA subsidy. So, who picks up the tab? It's the local communities that will cover any shortfall. It could be $700 million to $900 million, according to the latest estimates from last week's Value Study. And the JPA states it plainly in Section 5O, quote, "The parties to the New Mexico cap entity acknowledge that without local financial support, the construction of a New Mexico unit may not become a reality," unquote. This is the ISC's way of reminding local governments that there ain't no free lunch. You want this project, you will have to pay for it. Yep, sure. I've heard the justification that local governments need to sign on to the JPA so we have a seat at the table. And I think we're kidding ourselves if we think that signing on to the JPA will put us in the driver's seat. Sections 5M and N make it clear that the ISC controls the budget and will only reimburse expenditures according to an approved budget. The ISC's driving this train and will continue to push through its misguided plans for financially infeasible diversion project and force local communities in southwest New Mexico to pay for it. And finally, the biggest travesty of all is the fact that the JPA slams the door shut on using any of the AWSA funds for non-diversion alternatives. Section 3E states that use of all funds or income available through the AWSA or derived from the AWSA or made available to the New Mexico cap entity from all sources, regardless of where those funds are deposited, shall be used exclusively for the planning, design, construction, operation, and maintenance of a New Mexico unit, or all or any combination of those responsibilities, and for development of the AWSA water. Yet, we know that using AWSA funding and fully funding the non-diversion alternatives can meet southwest New Mexico's water needs at a fraction of the cost. And the JPA takes away the AWSA funding from these community water projects, and we know it can benefit irrigators, municipalities, our watersheds. So, supporting this JPA commits us to a financially infeasible $1 billion diversion project that will need to be funded by county residents, and it takes AWSA funding away from these community water projects. So, please disapprove the resolution. Thank you.
This is a public meeting. Everybody's going to get a chance. Please hold your comments to shore... or we'll be here all day, and I guess I don't really care. I don't have anything else to do, so... But that was a good presentation, Allison. Thank you. Donna, please be... shorter.
Might be shorter, because Allison already said it all.
I know.
Good morning, Commissioners, and thank you for this opportunity to speak to you. This time, I am addressing you as Donna Stevens, the Executive Director of the Upper Gila Watershed Alliance, which is a watershed protection nonprofit based in the Gila Valley. There are many compelling reasons not to sign the JPA. There are so many unknowns about the diversion project, including the actual water yield, the financial and ecological costs, the identity of the end-water user, and the technical feasibility of the diversion project as currently planned, such as it is. Who's going to pay for this project, which is estimated to cost $1 billion? The AWSA only provides $100 million, and according to my math, that leaves $900 million for taxpayers to carry. The JPA says, quote, "The parties agree that they may provide financial support to the extent they are able to, in each party's individual discretion, as necessary in perpetuity to plan, design, construct, operate, and maintain the New Mexico unit," unquote. After lengthy negotiations, the word "may" was substituted for "shall," so the ISC could kick the can down the road. Changing this one word only delays the day of reckoning, when attorneys will have to reconcile the contradictions in the JPA, which also states, quote, "The parties to the New Mexico cap entity acknowledge that without local financial support, the construction of a New Mexico unit may not become a reality," unquote. We can't have it both ways. We're either paying for it or we're not. And if we're paying for a diversion, it could bankrupt us and provide very little water. Because there's been such pushback against a $1 billion project, now we're hearing talk of a smaller, so-called Phase 1 diversion, which is supposed to cost only about $110 million. The question still remains, after all these years, who's going to buy that water? A handful of irrigators in the Cliff Gila Valley? The equation of growing low pasture, low-value pasture and alfalfa with expensive water just does not work out. What kind of legal crops can they grow to afford this pricey water?
You might have a point there.
I know I have a point there. The so-called escape clause in the JPA isn't much of an escape. It states, and I quote, "In the event of withdrawal by a party from this agreement prior determination of this agreement, the withdrawing party shall be obligated to honor all commitments made to the New Mexico cap entity before the withdrawing party's withdrawal. Moreover, the withdrawing party shall not be entitled to a refund of any amounts paid," unquote. This reminds me of the song, "You can check out any time you like, but you can never leave." It's not too late to advocate for common sense, fiscally responsible, non-diversion alternatives that meet our water demands for decades, don't destroy our river, and won't leave your constituents holding the bag. I urge you not to sign this JPA. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Dale Lopez. I'm a resident of Silver City, and I just wanted to speak this morning, and I know everybody knows that the Silver City Council has unanimously voted down signing on to the JPA. I've been watching this closely and reading all the literature and paying attention and watching the meetings that have been happening, and I was pleasantly surprised yesterday to read that Mr. Hall and you, Mr. Caston, have not made your minds up. And I say pleasantly surprised because I am of the opinion that most often times, people are beholden to corporations and big money, and they have their minds made up already, and I had you pegged for that. So, I'm thankful that you haven't made your mind up yet and that you're here to listen. Our mayor changed the public policy input two nights ago so that we could have more say from the community. That vote that they took against the JPA was mandated by the people, and it was expressed and reflected in the mayor's move and the unanimous vote to change public policy, public input, and to hear more from the community at this crucial time. The only person that I've seen through this whole process that has had their mind made up is Anthony Gutierrez. Every interview, everything I've read, he's pushing very hard to sign on and to get us in a position where he thinks we're going to have more of a say if we join them. And from my experience, long experience organizing in communities with people and corporations, negotiating with corporations and big money, people who join those things to try to have a say usually get bought out and won over by that power. And so, there was something written yesterday concerning the potential conflict with Anthony Gutierrez. A woman wrote in and asked, since he's an employee of Grant County and he's the chairman of the GSFWC, why is it that he's pushing so hard to sign on to the JPA? Is it possibly because he wants to become the director of the New Mexico Unit of the Cap? We have to be careful with individuals who, in my experience, push very hard to line themselves up for positions later on for money at the expense of our community and our resources. And I hope you take a stand against this JPO, protecting all of us from anybody who seeks personal profit or gain in this situation. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I know you didn't pick me, but I just...
He came up anyway. He jumped in front of the councilwoman.
Thank you, Belupay, for voting against the JPA agreement, Leslie. My name is Patrice Muchnek, and I have a home in Silver City, and I also have a home in Gila Hot Springs, New Mexico. I want to speak very briefly on behalf of my daughter, Ella Jazz Kirk, and I'm just going to read her words right now. All I ask of you is to consider what a diversion would do. Consider the opinions of the people in the state who don't want a diversion, who would rather have a free-flowing river, home to wildlife, farmers, and regular citizens trying to make a life in New Mexico, than a sole trickle of water in a bone-dry desert, an evaporating reservoir, and our taxpayer money down the drain. Regard our opinions as citizens, as people who are invested in the future, as humans who want to make an effort to conserve. I have recently been fighting a diversion of the Gila River in southwest New Mexico, and people ask me why it's so critical to preserve the river. They argue that humans need water, and I want to yell at them exactly. Here's how it works. You divert water from a stream or river, and the ecosystem and the wetlands, which are nature's purification systems, are degraded to a level where they disappear or no longer support a river system. You know this. This creates a situation that is unsustainable. You may be getting a temporary flood of drinking water, but because you degrade the wetlands and stream health, you destroyed the watershed, and you will have no water in the future. You are thwarting nature so cleverly, only to be rewarded with a system beyond our human control. Ella Jazz says, "We can't drink from our rivers at this point. They're just too important." I have said, Ella Jazz, there is a chance. I believe it, so if we look at watersheds as preservers of the peace, as filters of the water, as assets, keeping a healthy watershed is useless without limiting our growth and becoming more sustainable in other ways. Though it may be hard to transition to this lifestyle, it's mandatory. And now, I ask the people who want to divert the Gila River, is it really worth the water? It's time for a shift to realize that we have been pushing water resources past their limit. I'll skip down through some of the beautiful parts and just say, for myself, I haven't spoken out publicly against the diversion because my daughter was able to do so, and now I'm doing so on her behalf. This agreement is so ridiculously flawed, it's hard for most intelligent and educated people to understand what the heck is going on. I myself am a scientist. I'm an environmental scientist, have been a botanist my whole life. It is impossible for us to understand what is going on. Signing on to this agreement just because some other people did it and somehow the commission now has to get a buy-in, you need to make this stand and make a stand for rational decision-making. It's the only way. And as Ella said, we cannot escape from the fate of interconnection, so it's better to stare it in the face. No one has the answer as how to fix all the world's problems, but with a new understanding of how interconnected we are, perhaps we can fix something. We can never separate ourselves from the fate of any other creature. We are all in this together, for better or for worse. And for Mr. Ramos, who I spent some time with in Moguion Box last summer, just shortly after my daughter passed, and we looked down onto the valley, and I said, "Really? Really? Can you see this place as a construction site with trucks and cement and a mile worth of construction in this beautiful valley that all of us appreciate through many, many generations?" And he said, "Whatever it takes." It's hard, hard for us to understand. Ella says, this is it, "Living in a dry climate, we all have a little nagging fear that at some point, our town aquifers might dry up and we would have no water to drink. This fear is what drives us to divert streams and dam up great rivers just so we can gaze assured at the massive bodies of water at our disposal. But I don't want growth to squelch out every forest, every river, before we admit that we have to bend to nature. I want to be someone, part of a group of committed people, to demand a better life. I don't want to live in a world where a stack of dollar bills becomes a person. I want to live in a world where there doesn't need to be an environmental movement."
I am District 4 Town Councilor in Silver City. I don't speak for the council today, but I do speak for the residents of District 4. They are overwhelmingly against joining the JPA. Most of them are in this... Most of the people I have contacted me are in this room and will be speaking to you this morning, too. I stand with them against the JPA. I also, I believe it was Commissioner Caston who mentioned having a seat at the table. Well, the council wanted that, too. So, instead of joining the JPA, we directed our town manager to continue to negotiate. It's something you might want to consider, having your county manager continue to negotiate but not sign it. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Sarah Boyett. I'm a resident of Silver City. I'm also a board member for the Southwestern New Mexico Audubon Society, and I want to speak to you wearing that hat, but I would also like your indulgence to speak to you very briefly under my hat of being a historian. I have a background in 19th and 20th century American history with a specialization in the history of the West. Some of you may know, but others may not, that the birth of the Southwestern New Mexico Audubon Society was in 1968. It was the first chapter of the National Audubon Society founded in New Mexico, and it came about as a direct result of the threat of the Hooker Dam. That was almost 50 years ago, and our chapter has continued to support the riparian habitat of the Gila and to do all that we can in our mission to make the world a better place, not only for the animals and plants, but for humans. The reason the Gila Valley looks the way it does today is because of the efforts of so many people who have tried to reserve it and to find a balance between agricultural uses, recreational uses, the welfare of the species that live there. This whole process of 10 years under the Arizona Water Settlements Act has seen a lot of slogans on both sides. I know the one on the environmental side has been, "It's New Mexico's Last Free-Flowing River." Well, that's not entirely true, but it sort of grasps the idea of it's more an ideal than it is an actual fact. However, compared to what you all have in plan, have in sight for the Gila, yeah, I would say by comparison, it is. The other slogans, though, that are truly disturbing are, one, "It's New Mexico's Water." Well, anyone who has any grasp of water law rights knows that New Mexico is the junior water rights holder, not the senior. And so, it is not New Mexico's water, it's Arizona's water, even though it starts in New Mexico, and we have to buy it from them. Okay, we'll put that one aside. The latest one is to have a seat at the table. I really do think that's sort of illusory, and the reason is, there isn't... There isn't a table, and there's not going to be one. I can very confidently predict to you that this New Mexico cap entity will not survive. It may have just been born in the last few days, but it won't survive. It can't. It does not have the... I won't go into all of that. I'll just suffice it to say that it will either self-destruct, or it may not survive past November, when the Secretary of the Department of Interior pulls the plug on it. And when that happens, I would sincerely hope that you all would find a way to not spend up all the money that we could have for worthy conservation and reuse. Please do not spend that money on litigation costs, further studies, in-fighting the era of dams. And now, this, I'm talking, and I'll be very brief. I'll end in just a few sentences. I'll wear my historian hat now. The era of big dams and moving water from one place to another, it's over. And it's really hard to be on the losing side of history, but those with any wisdom and insight ought to be able to see which way the wind is blowing, and it's not blowing in this direction for diversion. So, with that said, I would like to just briefly take a moment to honor someone that I believe has embodied the very best of the past, our efforts to protect the Gila, and who is looking to the future, and that is Dutch Salmon. I think he deserves recognition. I think he deserves recognition.
I wasn't expecting that one. Yeah. Thank you. Dutch Salmon, Grant County resident. And there's been some talk about, okay.
It's all taped in voice.
Okay, I'll just hand over.
Yeah.
There's been a lot of talk lately about a smaller phase of the Gila program and joint powers agreement. I'm against the agreement, but I think there may be some possibilities in light of agriculture and other use for the river. So I put this together, spirit of compromise, you might say. Having spent enough years as a farm laborer to know a disc from a harrow and a live harrow from a dead one, I can easily relate to the cultural icon, the yeoman farmer. When flanked and nurtured by a verdant river valley like the Gila in New Mexico, the bucolic scene can capture the spirit of even city folks, especially city folks. Where the ISC, the Interstate Strength Commission, an advisory body rather than an imperious slice of state government, we might could achieve something radically good along the Gila, a minimal perennial flow to protect the river's unique ecology and recreation opportunities. A new style of roads can flow through irrigation system to benignly divert a fair amount of water for agriculture while retaining an in-stream flow. A controllable system which could satisfy the COFA. All this being a low-key affair that looks to spend a good less of the federal subsidy that is available for this project, leaving much of that subsidy for non-diversion alternatives, as previously portrayed by the Gila Conservation Coalition and others. And all this by way of getting rid of that big diversion idea and getting the machinery and the plan out of the upper box. Now, there's some problems with this scenario as well. The alternatives may have trouble satisfying the COFA protecting downstream users. The water is probably going to be too pricey for agriculture or even MNI use without the subsidy. Most of the water rights are owned by not yeoman farmers, but Freeport-Mackay and Tuppermaybach, it being known as a lavender farmer. But the biggest obstacle will be the rogue ISC itself, who are devoted, the staff at least, to their big project regardless of inefficiency and cost. Who, they will doubtless insist on blasting rock and making tunnels for pipelines you could drive a truck through, conveyance canals with a footprint with the width of a four-hundred-lane highway, and off-stream impoundments that evaporate water almost as fast as it seeps out the bottom. But there are some possibilities here that we should look at, and we'd just as well consider them and start talking about them, albeit the JPA is financially broke and ineffectual, to be sure, and also dangerous in the sense that due to the ISC, we really, who, the ISC was really ought to change its masthead and caliphon from a stream motif to that of a smoking D8 cat. Thank you. I had her first, Star.
Good morning, commissioners. And thank you very much for this opportunity to speak and public comment. I'm certain you've all had time to read and research about the fatally flawed plans to attempt diversions along the Gila and San Francisco rivers, and the fact that the JPA allows, by any means necessary, including new taxes, bonds, user fees, to help pay for such boondoggles. By the way, I'm Janet Wallad Ortiz, and I apologize for that. And 30-year resident of Silver City in Grant County. By rejecting the JPA, you will show your support for sanity and rational thinking and your concern for Grant County citizens by protecting them from the inevitable financial disaster that these diversion proposals will bring. Instead of diversions, these millions of federal dollars could be used to work right now, right here, in terms of water conservation projects and municipal water projects. Imagine not having to raise taxes to do these projects because the federal monies would cover it all. It has been proven again and again that any type of diversion on the Gila or San Francisco River is bound to fail, and millions of dollars more will be lost with no guarantee that there will be any water to divert. The damage to the economy, the environment, tourism, and sports activities will be irreversible. Once you've lost it, it's gone. According to James Marshall, who's the assistant manager of Silver City, the staff analysis included multiple reasons why Silver City should not sign on to the JPA, and I think it would be wise if you listened to a few of these. Maybe you read, or maybe you read the information that was sent to you in an email, but I'll just highlight a couple of them. Among a few of the key reasons included, "No protection for large municipalities or counties who would be burdened with huge costs." And you might ask, "Well, how much are these costs?" Good question, because that's another key point. These costs are unknown. There are unknown costs of the design, of the New Mexico unit design, construction, maintenance, and repair in perpetuity. That means long after you and I are gone, our children, our grandchildren, your friends, their children. The ISC retains complete control of expenditures, I think Donna Stevens mentioned this, and can deny any reimbursement without having to say why. And I don't think Mr. Marshall would be concerned if I quoted him. He said something that they might not like the sound of your email. They don't have to give you a reason why they're not going to reimburse you. They can just say no. No money is authorized to fund administration or legal defense. There's no business plan, and Silver City has been asking the ISC for a business plan since 2004, folks. There's no analysis of present or future customers, so we don't know who would be the end-users, who would pay for this. And there are many more, so I urge you, if you haven't read that email, it's very, very informative. But I'll highlight a couple things Attorney Scavron said also. He declares that the JPA is, quote, "A fatally flawed document," unquote. Now, this is the attorney for Silver City. And, quote, "Any public entity that signs on to it opens itself to uncalculated risks and costs," unquote. Mr. Scavron goes on to say, quote, "In my opinion, the JPA is filled with misrepresentations regarding the ability to pay, to put water to beneficial use, and to have the broad abilities to accomplish all the undertakings," unquote. He ended his presentation concluding that "Any local public official that knowingly enters into such agreement constitutes conduct that may be considered official malfeasance." This is not from me. This is from the Silver City attorney. Grant County could literally go bankrupt with this JPA scheme, excuse me. Is that something you want to be part of your legacy as a public service? Do the right thing for Grant County citizens. Vote against the JPA. Thank you very much.
I had Star next. I had Star next. I had you three times, and they kept jumping in front of me. I'm sorry.
That's, that's okay. I can be mellow about some things. I'm Star Belsky, former business owner, recently retired, thank God. Here speaking for myself as a resident of Silver City. There's an article in the Silver City Press from yesterday that has some quotes, I hope they're not misquoted. I need to address some of the things that are in there. And this is about the JPA. By the way, a reiteration of my background. I spent many years as a technical, political, and economics copywriter for the Brookings Institution. I'm not a lawyer, I'm not an economist, but I'm used to reading very closely. First of all, there was one comment that just bothered me because I spent hours reading these documents. There has been an analysis of benefits, Anthony. That's the BOR report, that's the Piper did, that I read through twice, and it came out that the costs exceed the benefits. And then there was the intimately ISC-guided and handheld, and I would say manipulated, report from the contractor Harvey Economics, which is not even located really in New Mexico, that said, "Oh, well, the costs are lower, and we don't have to count the costs of the money needed to be acquired to complete this program." I find that highly deceptive. So yes, analyses have been done. One, I think, is very earnest, and the other, I think, is very bogus. The bogus one, low balls. The costs and high balls, the advantages. The other thing is, Mr. Gutierrez, you were quoted here as saying...
Ma'am, address the commission.
Okay, the commission.
All right, yep. You're not talking to Mr. Gutierrez.
The JPA is just the formation of the cap entity. This is just a way in. My question, which I will reopen, is this or isn't this not a legal document and a contract? Now, I was, I read through the JPA twice, and although I'm not a lawyer, little alarm bells went off everywhere because of contradictions. And when I went to the town council meeting, both James Marshall and Robert Scavron did their due diligence in regards to what I believe is a contract, and said that this sets us up for tremendous amount of trouble. One of the issues they brought up right away are who else are the participants? Now, I hope at some point in this meeting that the commission will say who the eight other signees are and whether they have the money or whether they will fall in under the category of people, "Well, if I can't pay, I'll pay as much as I can, $5, $500." Who are the deep pockets who will then, if the JPA entity decides to vote for something, who will be responsible for it? Now, you've all expressed some doubts, and I think you need to go with that. There is, it gives discretion to the county on what degree they want to be involved. The county could leave, and of course, you know what the county does? The city does. Am I right about that jurisdictionally? You commit us, even though our city council said they really wanted no part of this because it was fraught and risky, the JPA, I'm not talking about anything else beyond this legal document. It's, there's a quote in here from one of you, "So we can pull the plug anytime up to that point. We may be responsible for it, but near at the beginning of some point, we can pull the plug." The last thing I'm going to say is Scavron said, I think it was Scavron, "To enter into a contract where you really do not have the intent to cover all the costs can set you up for contracting in bad faith." It's all public, it's all out in the public now. We may not have the money. We can get out if we want to. Do we want to use money to pay for lawsuits? Is this ethical? I hope you all make a right decision. Thanks for the chance to share my concerns and those of people in Silver City whom two of you represent.
Good morning, Commissioner Ramos, Commissioner Casten, Commissioner Hall. My name is Dr. Luis Quinones. I drove in from Las Cruces this morning. I'm a former resident of Grant County. And as I drove in, I was greeted by all the mining waste coming from that direction. I couldn't help but notice the ugliness of the acres and acres and acres and acres of all this mining pollution. And then I, as I was coming into Bayard, I saw that that road that was carved on the side of the hills, and I always remember one of my favorite, one of my favorite, favorite teachers. He was my teacher at Snell Middle School. I was the grant writer, public relations director for the Cota School District, and he was always friendly. Came in, never, never anything negative, always, always happy, jovial. He was angry this day. His name was Mr. Casten, I believe was your father. And he was so angry that that happened. And he wasn't very, you know, I never saw him angry ever in class or anywhere. And this time, he was angry, and he said, "One of these days, these people are going to pay for their sins." With him, is what he said. Now, I don't want to misrepresent how he would stand on this issue, okay? I just wanted to give you, that is an example of how I think most Grant Countyans see and appreciate Grant County. We don't have Eiffel Towers here. We don't have Empire State Buildings. We don't have the glitz that Las Vegas, Nevada, has that many people consider beautiful. We have something thousands of times more beautiful in Grant County. One of these is our beautiful geographic, cultural, and religious icon that we call the Nili Nun, our Madre Sagrada. And it's barely hanging by a thread due to, of course, the mind-blasting and everything else that goes on over there. We have those beautiful rolling hills and mountains that adorn our lives. We have the wonderful Gila wilderness that provides so many things to so many people. But there is nothing more and more beautiful in Grant County than our little flowing river, our Gila River. Nothing more beautiful than that. And as we prepare for the future, I know you have your grandchildren, your great-grandchildren, your children, and future generations. Will we leave them our Gila River and all the beautiful things that we have naturally in Grant County, or will we move in the, in the wrong direction? I come from Las Cruces, I live in Las Cruces now. And for the majority of the year, the Rio Grande, it's just sand. It's just sand. We don't want that to happen here with our Rio Gila or the San Francisco River. Janet Wallad Ortiz said this is a boondoggle, and I agree. Unfortunately, it's a boondoggle that will burden Grant County taxpayers for years and years to come. I ask you as a commission to please do everything in your power to undo this joint powers agreement, and today I ask you to please vote against this JPA. Thank you very much.
My name is Mary Burton Reisley, and I am a resident of the Cliff Gila Valley. I've owned land there since 1981. I'm also a fourth-generation New Mexican, and I find the gentleman who spoke before me a very hard act to follow. In fact, I teared up when he was speaking. I agree with him so strongly. And I agree with all the other speakers who have spoken against the JPA, but I wanted to add one other factor, and that is that when I first moved to live on the Gila River, which was in 1998, there was a great deal of tension and conflict in Catron County especially. And it was very noticeable to me that in the Gila Valley there was real neighborliness, and there was a lot of communication across the lines of the newcomers, relative newcomers, and the old-timers there. And on my ditch, on the Upper Gila Ditch Association, my community has two acres of water rights. We could not grow vegetables in a short year unless our neighbors upstream and our neighbors downstream said to us, "Sure, take water whenever you need it." And we have had that, and that's why we've been able to grow vegetables. If we enter into this project and we have a huge federally overseen irrigation project, a diversion, a dam, a huge pipeline canal, which will really wreck visually and ecologically our river system upstream from us. But the main thing for me, that one of the main things it will do for me is that we will all have meters, we will all have, you know, it will undermine all of that neighborliness and all of that close communication that people have in the... have in the Gila Valley. And I hate to see this, that die for something which, looking at all the scientific evidence, looks like is a very uncertain addition to our water supply. So please vote against the JPA.
Good morning, Councilwoman.
Good morning, Commissioner Caston. Good morning, Commissioners. I am actually Cynthia Bedison. I am a councillor for District One in the town of Silver City, and I'm also a professional registered archaeologist. So I'm going to speak to you on both. As a professional registered archaeologist, the proposed locations for the diversion systems are smack dab in areas that are chock full of significant archaeological sites. Some so significant that they're on the National Register of Historic Places. And while lots of folks have been talking about the NEPA process and the environmental damage, before any work can be done, NEPA has to be done, and so does archaeological mitigation. And as someone who has done archaeological mitigation, I can tell you that it is costly, it is expensive, and there'll be proposals to move anything around significant national registered historic sites. So just the cost analysis, I don't think really includes all that. And from an archaeological standpoint, many of us believe that this will never get to the point of actually, and I don't think, certainly not in my lifetime, given how old I am right now, but I'm just saying that it will take years to do the work. Some of the work that was done in the 1960s and 1970s for similar sorts of projects throughout the United States is still ongoing, if that gives you a notion of the potential length of time and cost before anything is ever, ever built. As a councillor for District One, I would like to say that my folks in District One have overwhelmingly asked, and asked me as the councillor that represents them, to reject the JPA, which was done on Tuesday. And I would hope that all of you'd had an opportunity to either review the Silver City council meeting on Tuesday, either through CD or online, and also review the incredibly well-put-together statements by our staff. Both former mayor and assistant town manager, James Marshall, and of course, the town attorney, who is one of seven municipal attorneys in the state, Robert Scavron. And just lastly, one little thing that I'd like to say. The JPA is kind of like the Hotel California. You can enter, but you can't leave. Because you really can't leave, because you will pay forever. You will only lose your vote if you decide to leave. So, I mean, you know, it's not quite as bad as Hotel California in the sense that y'all won't, you know, have something else happen to you, but, you know, because that song kind of implies that, you know, something else will happen. But, yeah, but anyway, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, that it really, the critical point here is that there may be, there seems to be an out for people who join it, but there is not, because you will need to pay whatever you had committed in perpetuity. So, thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Good morning. We haven't had anybody from outside the room in a while.
My name is Jeff Boyd. I live in Grant County. And just thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. If Grant County joins the New Mexico cap entity, is subject to majority decisions of a presently unknown membership. Quoting John Marshall, Assistant Town Manager of Silver City, quote, "Since the power to commit rests with the majority of a quorum, which may contain empty-pocketed parties who can bind the whole, there is no protection for large municipalities or counties with assets and population base whose individual vote is no more valuable than the smallest public district," unquote. You may think Grant County is low in access and population base, and it is, but compared to the other three counties, it is by far the biggest and the most, and the richest. You take the other three counties, Luna, Hidalgo, and Catron together, and they barely surpass Grant County in taxable assets. Now, compared to the richest, biggest counties in New Mexico, of course, Grant County is Like, Bernaleo is about 20 times, has about, the tax base about 20 times what Grant County has. The tax base of Grant County is about 750 million as of 2014. So does this mean that other counties, Luna, Catron, and Hidalgo, will be depending on Grant County to pay the largest share of the costs? And then what are the water allocation amounts on project completion? We have no idea. Will that be based on the current water usage? If it is, Grant County is a distant third. If you add up the other three counties compared to Grant County, they use four times as much water as of 2010 that Grant County does. So will each member receive an allocation based on their water usage or on their financial Will Grant County, the richest of the four counties, subsidize the cost of water allocated to the biggest water users? If the majority rules in the cap entity, how will Grant County benefit from joining? There is serious disagreement between the ISC and the counties on where the money for the project will come from. The ISC insists the southwest counties will need to contribute substantially. It is evident that the counties do not have the resources for anything but token contributions. With the flimsy liability protections in the JPA that we've all heard about, and this is not for me, I'm not a lawyer, I'm an engineer, it looks like Grant County would be taking a huge risk in signing the JPA, and the possible returns are minuscule. If we get, if they allocate, well, the expected yield is no more than 8,000 acre-feet per year, and that's being very optimistic. If every county gets 2,000 acre-feet per year, that amounts to 4%, less than 4% of what Grant County currently uses in water. 4%. If you cut your usage by 4%, that would be like taking a 10-minute shower and cutting 20 seconds off that shower. If we could all do that in four counties, we would save a billion dollars.
Hi, Ralph.
My name is Ralph Dominguez. I state that for the record, but you all know me. I was born and raised in Grant County, lived in Silver City. My family has been farming and ranching in the Gila Valley for over 100 years. Our water rights go back to the 1800s. I stand to, I think by myself, I stand this morning to speak in favor of you joining this pack. And I'd like to give you a little bit more background about myself. I was the city councilman in District Four for eight years. It's my opinion, and I respect the opinion of others, but it's my opinion that District Four does not stand overwhelmingly against this. I've also known the ranchers and the farmers in the Gila Valley for many, many years. My family, my father and my grandfather raised families out there, and I continue to support my family from the water that comes from the Gila River. I'd like to begin with an analogy. If you watch a bullfight, you see the bullfighter and you see the bull out there. And the purpose of the bullfight is to kill the bull. But the only way that a 150, 200-pound individual can defeat a 2,000-pound bull is by the use of the cape that he has or she has. That cape is used to distract the bull, so that he's not paying attention to the bullfighter, and eventually, the bullfighter will kill the bull. I'd like to address our intent and purposes this morning. Now, the intent and purpose of most of those who have spoken this morning is to prevent the free-flowing river, to prevent the Gila River from becoming a flea-flowing river. I may have stated that wrong, but their intent is to stop the water from flowing down the That's the, that's an oversimplified discussion of, or description of what's happening, but if you begin with the end in mind, that's their end purpose, is to let that water continue to flow down the river going to Arizona. If we look at our intent and purposes as representatives of the community, of Grant County and of Silver City, it is to protect and take care of the citizens of this community. We cannot do that with less water. We need to be thinking about those individuals that are not being represented here today, those individuals who are our children and grandchildren, those people that will be here 20, and 30, and 40, and 50 years from now. If we lose the opportunity to keep and to hold the water that's going down the river, we are doing a disservice to those individuals. I can't hardly believe that as you think, all the way through everything you've seen and heard, that it would be your intent to do so. No representative in the town and in the county of Silver City can actually say that they care about the people in Silver City if their intent is to let our water continue to flow to Arizona without us using it. I believe these things, and I hope that you believe them also. Thank you very much for hearing me.
Yes, ma'am. We've had your hand up forever. I've tried to get to you.
All the speakers, thank you. Ronnie Sue Halsner, Pinos Altos. Late, very late last evening, I sent an email to the Commissioners, which you probably haven't seen yet, so I will submit a copy of that and read a few highlights, perhaps highlights, of what I've written. I've been involved with the AWSA process since its inception, and I recognize that there are a lot of diverse interests in the projects. Whether or not you agree, anyone agrees with the Grant County parts of the proposal, or the entire list of projects that could happen, this JPA is a dangerous document to sign. And I feel it puts our county citizens in excessive jeopardy. In short, I have four or five main points. One, the JPA provides inadequate protection to Grant County citizens against future financial overload, as you've heard. Two, I feel it's faulty in only allowing signatories to have access to the funds. It's kind of like using public funds to have a private club. I feel like we don't know what the future opportunities may bring, and if this actually were to come to pass, that Grant County's a member of this, maybe there's something that shows up later. There is a provision that a later signatory could be added in, but if there's a very small entity with a really good idea, or, there's no way to approve it without them having to share the full burden of the JPA. The JPA commits the signatories, you, to promising that you have the sole authority to implement the financial and other provisions. Although it seems to me that you might not quite have all that authority. For example, it talks about levying taxes and implementing bonds, and I don't know, but some of that might require a vote of the citizens. It also requires, essentially requires, funding amounts beyond that provided by the AWSA funding, as you've well heard, thus committing citizens to future tremendous burden. And it gives the ISC approval for spending those funds through the budget approval process. So if eight communities or whomever want to take on that burden and feel like it's viable to do so, I say, that's fine, let them. It doesn't mean Grant County needs to. And if we have really good ideas for projects, both conservation and non-conservation projects, we can find other funding for them. I list a few recommendations in my email. One, the JPA did not list exactly what the projects are that are supposedly being funded, so I feel like that would be an important addition. Two, the JPA might work if it only addressed the AWSA portion of the funds and left community funding completely out of it as something that then the New Mexico cap entity would decide as a whole on using their constituents. So to use the AWSA money, including for non-diversion conservation projects, might be a way to use the joint powers agreement. Again, I'm trying to speak without bias as to what it's funding and only discuss the Well, I basically said, allow for other entities' use of the funds if the New Mexico cap entity allows it, and importantly, somehow provide for the conservation project funding. Clarify the benefits and the effects of requesting this transfer of authority from the Secretary of Interior. It says that the Secretary of Interior must do that if requested, but it's not clear what happens if it's not requested. But basically, all the, all the verbiage you've heard already is not just personal views, there are also important professional statements that, please do not sign the joint powers agreement.
Good morning, Kyle.
Good morning. I'd like to give some context here before we talk about some of the financial aspects of this. With regard to the competence, capacity of this body or the other bodies that would be making these decisions under the JPA. Our convention center sits there incomplete, and I don't know if there, perhaps someone has declared a date certain that it will be completed, but I don't know what that date is, I haven't heard that from anybody. The building that we are standing in right now, if we go back about 10 years, you may recall that the finances of Grant County were essentially the state-assumed responsibility because of the mismanagement of a remodel on a single building. A single building crashed Grant County's financial capacity. The state had to step in and take over the books. So let's keep those contexts in mind, and let's now give some sense of proportion of a $200,000 or so remodeling job. And what is already acknowledged by the ISC as a $700 million project for which many other vital and complex other vital and complex issues have not been addressed, geology, the lining of these suggested reservoirs, et cetera, et cetera, from which a person might reasonably arrive at that $1 billion figure. As was mentioned earlier, there has not been a discussion, or I'm not aware, of the cost of the financing. But here we are in a four-county area. I may not be exact on the census numbers, but we're talking round figures here. I think we're talking about 60,000 people, half of whom are in Grant County, approximately 20,000 in Luna, approximately 3,500 in Catron, and I suppose that leaves about 6,500 in Hidalgo County. So we're talking about saddling them one way or another with a billion-dollar project. We haven't talked about, again, the financing of whatever that is going to require. We haven't addressed cost overruns. We haven't addressed the fact, as I understand it, that 20% of the water that has flown down the Gila River in approximately the last 70 years occurred during three events in three years, 20% of the water. So when we talk about this averaging this out as how much water is available, if you subtract that 20%, then you're going to be subtracting the amount of water that is available as well. That has not been stated publicly by the ISC, as far as I'm aware. It was only through their incompetence that they released the data that they had actually refused to provide, which confirmed that. So we're looking at 60,000 people taking on $1 billion in one of the poorest states in the nation, in one of the poorest regions of the nation, of the state, rather. And how could that ever happen? What amount of taxes could ever be raised to come close to that? Obviously, then you're talking about bonds, or you're talking about private investors. What investor in their right mind is going to throw down $1 billion for an amount of water that is, as these things go, a drop in the bucket? How could that ever work? So one of the things that you might imagine in the world of creative financing, that these titans of financial industry that have essentially ruined the economy of the United States and the world, they will tell you anything. And one of the things that by the time you get around to signing anything, I think that they're going to want a guaranteed return, they are going to want a guaranteed return, rain or shine, water or no water, otherwise, no money. And that will be backstopped by how? By whom? By the taxpayers, to whatever degree they can extract blood from a rock. And ultimately, all of this becomes a confluence of forces. If you want to think of a mighty river that has a lot of flow in it, think about the power and the urges towards privatization of this water by whatever entity can pull it off, company in France, Southeast Asia, whatever it might be. So I seriously urge you to do what is within your capacity. I would actually like for you to state who the other eight signatories are at this point. And Jeff's comment about the tail wagging the dog is very appropriate here, because this is exactly the mentality of the Gila Basin Agitation Commission meeting, that, oh, well, if we sign this thing, we will be able to tell, you know, we'll outnumber because we've got three ditches right here. That's three votes. Pardon?
You're going way over your time.
Thank you very much. I would urge you to vote against it.
When we get ready to do our questions, that's one of the questions we'll ask.
Okay. It's within your power to drive a stake through the heart of this by refusing to sign this thing. If the ditch associations think they can raise $1 billion, let them try. You have the power to stop this thing dead in its tracks. Don't pretend that you don't.
I live in the county. I've been watching this from the sidelines. I've been to a couple of meetings, and I've been reading the material in the papers and so on. And I'm an old bureaucrat, and old Fed, and also been in newspapers for a while, and it's been interesting to watch the process. And I pretty quickly got the idea that there was a pig and a poke here. And you'd hear questions being asked, and the answers would be non-responsive. How much is it going to cost? Well, we can't let all those $1 million of free money get away. What about this study? Well, we'll do that when we get down the road. And, you know, it became pretty evident from somebody who's been watching government processes that the fix was in, with the ISC at least, that the determination had been made long ago that this was going to get done, one way or the other. And there's nothing I've seen so far that argues with that. I'm not capable professionally to handle all of the comments, the details that you've had from other people today, but I hope you'll take account of them, and I appreciate the time that you're spending letting us say things. I do know a little bit about the archaeology that Dr. Beddison talked about, and yes, mitigation will kill this thing right there. But now that pig and a poke looks like it has turned into a skunk in a sack. And I hope you back away quickly and carefully.
My name is Andy Payne. I'm a resident here of Grant County. And I'd like to say, I agree with the gentleman who was involved in agriculture, one thing that he said at least. And he said that it's your job to protect the people of your community, and I agree with that. And signing this JPA would not do that, it would be exactly the opposite. You need to protect us from this tax liability that's going to be hanging over us for years and years. I went to the city council meeting the other night, and I listened to the assistant town manager and the city attorney go on for about five, 10 minutes each, just listing item after item of why this was a flawed agreement. And what I came away from that meeting thinking was that if you sign on to this, what you're really doing is signing a blank check for somebody else to fill in the amount on how much Grant County's going to pay. And I would like to have you on our team if I had a billion-dollar project too, because you have some tax authority where you could raise money and help us out. So they're going to really be glad when you sign on. You said today you have eight people signed on. If you sign on, that'll make you one of nine, so it gives you one vote out of nine. If 10 more entities sign on, that's going to give you one vote out of 19. And yet, you are the player that has all the money. They're going to be coming to you for all of this, and you're going to have one vote to change their mind. It's not going to work. And another thing I came away from that meeting was, you can't easily withdraw from this. It sounds like you can, but any commitments that you make, this according to the city attorney, and then you withdraw, all you're withdrawing from is your vote, but the commitment you made is still there. There's many more things I could say, but everybody's already said that much better than I can. But I think that this is probably one of the most important decisions you'll make as commissioners, and I hope you do the right thing. Do not vote for this. Thank you.
As I see it, gentlemen and gentlewomen, the diversion of the river is an illusion without hardly any benefits, except perhaps for the damming area. Who, by the way, as I see it, they already get our water because they're downhill from us. They're filtered at 99%. They just need to drill a few more wells. Besides the extreme expense to the future generations, it would most definitely rob them of the recreational area. And I mean that sincerely. I have rafted the 55 miles of the crow flies for the past so many years since 1971, and it's getting, they're getting ready to destroy this. I'm planning on sharing these trips with a troubled young youth that are getting with drugs and what have you. I want to take them and have them and dad have three, four, or five days out there and let them see what life is really about, try to make a difference. Coupled with the idea that I have, and I'll make it happen before I am six feet under, I will take wounded warriors that have shared their time and efforts to fight for our freedom so we can have the river free-flowing, to top it off. When they come back, they'll need a little bit of appreciation, and I plan on giving them that appreciation by guiding them down the Gila River before it's dammed. Two days after my firstborn son was born in 1974, I took off to float to the raft to the river. I had already planned on it. That's when the river is best, in mid-May to first part of June. So I rafted the river. I've never heard the end of that because my firstborn was born two days before. But that was beneficial to other folks, other kids, other of my wife's kids. I've taken all of them down, my brother, sister, my entire family. They would like to be here and explain the neatness of being out there in the river. Most of you know, but a lot of you do not. I have photos to share with those that may be of interest, so you can see the difference between a one-man float and a float at a raft that most people think of. No, this is a single person, a single, and it's very exciting, and very adventurous, and benefit, especially to the young youth that are in trouble so much today. Thank you.
My name is Stephanie Smith. I am the co-leader of the Great Old Broads for Wilderness. And I threw out my notes because what everyone has said here today has been so moving and so right on target. I just want to say that if something looks like a rat, smells like a rat, don't feed it. Don't feed this rat. Thank you.
My name is Jason Amaro. I live here in Grant County. I have a house in E20 of districts, so look good to know. I am currently representing Trout Unlimited. For the last 15 years, I used to live in the corporate world, so I can sling, you know, project plans, spreadsheets, numbers with the best of them, but I'm not even going to go there because it seems like everyone's already kind of talked about that. But as a sportsman, I have hunted and fished up and down the Gila all my life. I've rafted, you know, that's where I grew up. We have a cousin that we call Bob, because he has a little red and white hat, and he went floating down the river, and he looked like a bobber as he went down the river. So we call him Bob. His real name's Juan, but we won't go there. Anyway, so recently, I got ahold of this map. It's a topo map of where the possible diversion sites may be. Okay? So I got the map, started looking at it, and I'm like, hmm, this is kind of interesting. So I loaded up the kids, put them in my old truck that we were about to get rid of, taking on my truck's last ride, and we went to start looking at each one of these sites. And it's kind of scary. It really is. The first one, Commissioner Ramonos and I went on with, and we took a look at it, and you look at how they're going to have to do it, and they're going to have to build a massive amount of roads, they're going to have to fence this water encasement out. You know, when I first heard about this diversion, I thought, wow, we can maybe have a pond, and we can go fishing. Sportsmen would love that. But then they start talking about a plastic barrier and fencing it off. So that idea went out the door. So the sportsmen, I'm kind of like, maybe this isn't so great. So then we started to look at some of the other possible diversion sites that are on this map, and I think you guys have it. So we went to diversion site number two. So load all the kids back up in the truck, drive up over the mountain, over Turkey Creek, drop back in, and we're like, wow, they're going to have to build, this road is going to have to be humongous to get the kind of equipment they're going to need to build this diversion dam. So I look at the map, okay, so my son and my daughter were kind of playing in the water. Okay, the diversion dam's going to go from here to here, right through that campground where those people are swimming in the river. Okay? So that's out of the question. So then we go up a little part to diversion part, called diversion 2A. Again, another campground that they're going to have to get rid of so they can work on this whole diversion. So then we kind of drive through the river, as you know, you can drive through that river, good or bad, that's not my point to play, but you can drive through the river, you know, you can go through your ATVs, your UHVs, you can have a good time, kind of splash in the water. So we start driving up, and then I start looking at the plans for an infiltration system. So what the heck is an infiltration system? You know, it sounds kind of space-agey, Star Wars-ing, we're going to infiltrate the world. Well, part of the plan is to create, put a pipe in the creek, in the bed, in the bed of the river to suck in some of that water. So are we going to be able to cross that water anymore? Probably not. I suspect that vehicles going over that pipe are going to crush that pipe and it'll make it useless. So I'm like, okay, so they're going to have to cut this road way back, and it's going to keep access down. And as a sportsman, that is my biggest concern. If we put something into Turkey Creek or in the box, it's really going to reduce access for sportsmen, UHV people, fishermen, hiker, rafters, just about anybody, because they're going to put the cement diversion up, they're going to put fences up, and it's just not going to be as floatable. So as a sportsman, we are already losing so much access that we're fighting for. This is just one more thing. Just one more way of losing access. And, you know, it's going to hurt. It's going to hurt a lot of people, because a lot of us grew up there in Turkey Creek. And for us, for my children, to have that, it's really going to hurt. So vote against this JPA, and if you decide to do it, please, fight like heck to make sure that sportsmen do not lose access, because that will be your legacy. Thank you.
So is there anybody else today? Okay, I'm going to take you, and then we're going to take a little recess. I got her in the back.
Thank you for a brief opportunity to speak. My name is Carol Beth Elliott, and I'm a newcomer to Grant County. I've only lived here 25 years. And I have rafted the river and kayaked the river and loved the river, loved the wilderness. I just want to comment that it's interesting to me, the commissioners here, I know at least one of them is firmly in favor of this JPA. I hope that your constituents are letting you know that they're in favor of it by sending you emails or something, because they're not in this room. I know a lot of people who have sent emails who are also not in this room, who are also urging you to vote no, as I am. I also just want to call to your attention that the one person who did speak today and urged you to vote yes, he made the comment that it's our water. It's actually Arizona's water, and even if we divert it, we have to pay for it, the water, not the diversion, the water. So who's going to pay for that? Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Please vote no. Please, vote no.
So we're going to finish up the public comment portion of the meeting today with Linda here.
My name is Linda Pafford, resident of Grant County. I can't say more eloquently than what has already been said by so many. So I just wanted to be sure that I'm on the record, as it's often complained that not enough people are on the record, that I am against this JPA agreement. And so, to make a comment, I will say, let's look at some bumper stickers that have been posted here tonight, this morning. One is pig in a poke. We don't know what we are buying. Another is boondoggle. We know it's going to cost a lot of money in perpetuity. I think that's the definition of boondoggle. I would also add blackmail. If we don't sign onto this, somebody else is going to make the decision for us. They hold out a carrot on a stick that somehow our farmers are going to get more water. But everything I've read is that is not true, or at least it is certainly not guaranteed. It appears that the money that has been promised for conservation might disappear. And finally, you mentioned that there are eight entities who have already signed the JPA. But the document itself says anybody can leave if they want to. And it's been discussed that that may not be as simple as we think. But those eight others, when they are left alone, may decide to change their mind.
I said that will be the last, but this will be the last.
Thank you very much. I'd like to make a few points that other folks have not made. My name is Tom Manning, and I'd like to remind you that the ISC tried to keep the yield data secret for a very long time. It's finally come to light, and now we're speaking of a second diversion. I haven't yet heard any reassessment of the costs, considering that they may need a second diversion in order to actually get the water that they were saying that we could get from the Gila originally. At any rate, the process has not been open, and that should give us all pause. At any rate, y'all expressed that joining the JPA would give you a voice in the process. I think that the strongest voice that you could have is just to say no to the JPA. Thank you.
Commissioner?
I'd like to make motion to move to recess.
So motion to move into recess. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, we'll take about five-minute recess, and then we'll return, and we will start with staff's reports. Thank you.
Call back to order the Board of County Commissioners' regular meeting of June 25, 2015. The next item on the agenda, allow everybody to take a little time and get their seat. Next item on the agenda, we're still discussing the approved or disapproved Resolution R1517. This is a resolution to approve the joint powers agreement to create the New Mexico Unit of the Central Arizona Project pursuant to the Arizona Water Settlement Act. We've just completed public input. We will move in with staff reports. I appreciate everybody's input today. It's important for us to make an informed decision. We were very lenient with the amount of time. We gave you all the time we wanted. We didn't interrupt you. I appreciate you doing the same thing for our staff. Let them finish, and then at that time, we will make our decision. So at this time, we'll move to Anthony Gutierrez, county planner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think that we went into pretty heavily discussed topics. Commissioner Hall and yourself had questions that we answered on Tuesday regarding the joint powers agreements. I don't really want to move too much back into there, but I have been writing some notes, as all people have been commenting here. And I certainly am in agreement with several items that they brought up. The fact that the Bureau of Reclamation has done a value study, and in that value study, I attended last week myself. In that value study, I was able to see how the Bureau of Reclamation and the engineers put together the cost analysis that they do. And what I was referring to is that when they did that cost analysis on Tuesday, I said they didn't do any benefit or value, what I, in my sense of what it means. They didn't use any cost benefit or any value that is produced from the project, and to vet the overall project cost analysis. And it was also brought up that there could potentially be more contingencies, that the $700 million project would be a billion-dollar project because there's also another, the potential other costs that would be incurred. So I think that the BOR doesn't actually more than account for those type of things as they add 107% contingency on their cost analysis. It was a little bit puzzling to me that you do a cost analysis. All the linings actually were put in the cost analysis, because there has been no geology. The cost analysis was done by several engineers, all the way from one that specializes in tunnels, to water conveyance, to reservoir stability and construction. So all of those, all of the costs were taken into consideration, but then there was 107% contingency. So all the costs that they got, they did all the evaluations, they put those costs together, and then they doubled plus. So I think that there was more than enough, so when you see a $350 million project, the original cost analysis was 175, but they doubled it. And that has to do with some of the design of, you know, overall construction costs, I mean permitting, all those things, which are substantial costs. So I just wanted to bring that up before we move forward on the JPA portion of it. I think we talked about whether or not the entities were forced to pay once a decision had been made. Number one, I think that the NEPA analysis has a lot to do with the overall cost or overall actual scope of the project. So it's difficult to fully engineer a project to get those full engineering analysis without doing the NEPA first. I think that's why the Act has an order for us to do things. First, Interstate Stream Commission had to give notice of potential diversion, 2014, 2015, they had to come to an agreement with, they actually moved back. The cap entity has to be created. The Gila-San Francisco Water Commission went to the Interstate Stream Commission and asked them to be appointed as the cap entity, as we felt that we were a good representation of the area, our members, we felt were a good representation of the area, excluding the Towne River City, of course. The Towne River City chose not to enter into joint powers agreement with the Gila-San Francisco, much as they didn't want to with the JPA. And my understanding, the reasoning behind it is because of the intent of the Gila-San Francisco was also to keep the water, have a diversion project. So moving forward by November 23rd, because there's a one-year timeline in between when the ISC gave notice to when the potential agreement could be signed, would be November 23rd, 2015. And so the formation of a cap entity, it was desired upon by the Interstate Stream Commission that JPA must be done. They felt that that was the best way to try and have a good document that would provide that entity. It's, of course, been cussed and discussed and kind of torn apart here and there by many people on the fact that it may not be the perfect document, and we all agree to that. It was, but it was done with, you know, there were attorneys involved. There were two attorneys from the Interstate Stream Commission, Pete Dominguez Jr., who represented the Gila-San Francisco Water Commission, in vetting of the JPA. We also had our county attorney gave some recommendation to those attorneys. The attorney from Katrin County also gave recommendation. So while it's been said that there was no real legal or educated personnel that was to put this JPA together, I tend to disagree, because there was a substantial amount of effort put into it. Now, not everyone is satisfied with the JPA, and I understand that, but it does afford the right to, number one, I think that it gives the discretion to each individual governing board to invest or not invest in a potential project. It gives them an opportunity to get out if they would like. Now, if you do decide to invest in a potential project, and then you decide to get out, well then there's provision in there that says you have to pay whatever you have deemed necessary. So I don't know how much further we want to get into this. Like I said, we went over several of these questions on Tuesday. I do want to also take some things into consideration. Let's talk about the Roskin. And let me move back a little bit. One of the reasons why I attended the value study last week, and although Mr. Lopez said it was because I was looking for a new job, I'm certainly not looking for a new job. I want to make that clear with our manager there. But I think that my representation there was, excuse me?
He already had it posted.
Well, irregardless, I think that my intent, I am representative of Grant County, and I am representative of the Gila-San Francisco. I think that, I think we'll go into that a little bit later on, but four of the seven entities that have joined are all irrigators from the Gila Valley. So before they had the value study done, they had a tour. And in that tour, the farmers were able to discuss the needs that they see and the potential that they could use that water for. And currently, as was stated earlier, there's currently a water share out there, because nobody is able to get their full right of water. Now, even though they're going to have to pay for it, and even though that they are not able to get what's rightfully theirs, the farmers are willing to take a chance and be able to, just to be able to have a more value-added product on their farms. So going back to the value study, I was able to give some input, and much like the sportsman that was just up here, I was able to give the input that the diversion areas are right where people like to recreate. I was able to give them that insight. The people that were vetting this project are all from, they were from Colorado, they were from, one from Indiana, Chicago. There was lots of engineers from different places. They had absolutely no knowledge of the area. They all considered ecology, of course, but they didn't have any general knowledge of the area. You know, I've been a lifetime resident there. I don't, there's very few people, except for Mr. Dominguez, who was the owner, so, I guess he has a lot of courage to come over here and speak in front of this crowd, but he did mention something. There's a lot of people here that aren't being represented, and I like to represent those people. I felt that I represented those people when I went to the value study and was on that team. I think that the farmers in the JPA, I have a list here on my phone, that's why I keep one right on my phone, but they feel that they need to be represented on the cap entity because they are at a loss. They're not able to get the water. The gentleman that was referred to go, that he rafted downstream in May, you can't do that anymore. There's not enough water in Oak River in May to be able to raft downstream. Those things don't happen anymore, and it's affected the farmers. I'm a lifetime resident in the Gila Valley. I've seen what the valley used to, it used to flourish with all types of value-added products, you know, corn and milo and oats and alfalfa, and it didn't just used to be a bunch of permanent pasture that are now grazed by cattle. But that's all that people can actually afford to make money now. And so I think that, I think there is a lot of value in at least researching a potential project that would benefit not only them, but your municipalities if it's needed. Right now, we have several projects in the area trying to satisfy the demand. We've got some issues with the town of Hurley, with Hanover, with a lot of areas. Well, the projects are good projects because now they're going to have a regional system. A regional system could solve a lot of issues. But how do you get that water? Well, the first thing you do is drill a well. The Towne River City is supported by wells that are also in the Gila Basin. And it's been proven that any well and any groundwater diversion has significant impact on the surface water. So whether you take it from a well in the ground, or whether you take it from the surface, you still affect the surface water. So I think that we have to take all those things into consideration. Going back to the JPA, I think that this is the next step in the process. I feel that we try to make it, to try to protect a barrier around the local government, not only Grant County, but all the government entities that are wanting to join. It's my understanding that Luna County joined just last night. I don't think that they're in any position, just like Grant County is, to pay for a large product they can't afford. One of the issues was, and one of the things I want to point out, is because of my presence at the value study last week, I was able to give them some insight on, hey, those things are too expensive. We can't afford those. You know, we need to look at some alternatives that we can actually afford. We need to look at some alternatives that we can use potential revenues from the water that is gained. And we take a look at, you know, 8,000 acre feet of what we call guaranteed water or not guaranteed water. But the fact is, that's twice the amount that Towne River City and Damming use today. And so that's a substantial amount of water. In my opinion, it's a substantial amount of water when we have these small communities and we have limited access. So I think that although, and I'm certainly in, you know, I'm in agreement. I live there, and I don't want this big, I go to Turkey Creek, matter of fact, I've been there three times in the past two weeks. And I'm certainly not in favor of any type of big diversion project that's going to mess that up for me. But I think that without the input from our community and the input into a potential project, we don't have that voice to say, hey, I don't want that thing built there. Or, hey, I don't want a huge project. Or, I don't want, you know, for there to be a significant impact on my fishing hole. Without that, it's my opinion that we don't have a say in that. We potentially could stand out there, you know what I mean? We could protest, or we could do all these things, but as a government entity, I feel that we should be, like I said, at the table, and saying, you know what? These things aren't going to work for us. Now, the cap entity actually will have ownership of the Mexico Unit, which is the project itself, at which time, there are a lot of, there is a lot of time for you to sign an actual agreement for a project. The current description of the Mexico Unit is a pretty vague description, and it leaves it open for a lot of calculation to be done, a lot of engineering to be done, a lot of environmental compliance to be done. And that's what's going to go before the secretary in November. And so I think that we allow ourselves flexibility to be able to build a project that we can afford, although everyone says it's a billion dollars, I tend to disagree. I don't think that anybody in any of the entities today I don't think that anybody in, in any of the entities today would agree that a billion-dollar project could be beneficial for their community. So I, I think that, um, there's a lot of, there's a lot of things that, yeah, are unknown and we certainly won't know until, until the process goes forward, uh, but I think, my opinion, and it's only my opinion, is that, uh, we should be able to at least have a voice in what's gonna go on. Unless you have any questions directly for the JPA, I'd be certainly willing to answer them. I'm prepared and I will, uh...
I think, um, or Mr. Ceteris, we have, I have been seeing some stuff on Facebook that's put out and I do have a concern. What, what areas are gonna be fenced off? Because that's what they've put down on, on Facebook. I'm hoping there's nothing fenced off because, I mean, I utilize that river probably more than 90% of the people here and, uh, I don't want to see anything fenced off.
Well, Commissioner Ramos, um, Mr. Chairman, I think that, uh, the potential for a fencing of, of a diversion structure, uh, that all depends on whether or not, you know, you need protection. The diversion structure that they currently propose, um, are, uh, actually have to allow 150, uh, CFS to go by. So the structure actually has to allow the river to continue to flow. Um, now, I haven't really looked fully in depth at the diversion structure itself and where exactly it's gonna be placed because it hasn't been, you know, that hasn't been done in the exact, exact location. There are potential alternatives that show potential locations and they were all vetted, um, in the value study and the potential for a diversion is at the mouth of, uh, Brock Canyon. And that's right where the, where, that's right where the, um, where the road goes, um, and kind of comes out, um, right there and people can start recreating. But it's, but it's really not in the location where, um, the first camp on it, it's actually downstream of there. Um, now, uh, like I mentioned earlier, nobody knew anything about the area and whenever I mentioned to them that, hey, you know, lots of people recreate there and there's lots of things, they started looking at alternatives and I think that's what we need to do. That we, we need to say, hey, wait a minute, um, there's, there should be an alternative. We also, when we do it, when we're doing our tour, we went all the way to Turkey Creek and we looked at those locations where the infiltration galleries are and, you know, they're substantial, they put them substantially in the ground. They, they have to go in below, below scour debt, so, so a vehicle running over top of them is not gonna disturb them. But at the same time, when we rode down there, when we rode back, they looked at the first site for the reservoir, which was, um, uh, Spark Canyon. When we parked at the road right there at Spark Canyon and they said, well, here's a potential reservoir site. Uh, we have a reservoir site here, we can hold X amount of, uh, of acre feet of water on a lower unit and then X amount on an upper unit. And that's one of the phase one, uh, cost analysis that they did. Well, I told them, I was like, why are we running a pipeline or a tunnel from Turkey Creek, which is about, as the crow flies, three and a half or four miles away, when the water's 300 feet away, 300 yards away? And nobody could answer that. It has to do with pumping and, and all those costs associated with pumping. Well, I told them, well, okay, fine, so you have to pump. So why can't we use solar energy? Why can't we use a potential, uh, solar field to energize the pumps that would potentially use that? The footprint, the ecological footprint that it would have on the area would be substantially smaller. You wouldn't have to worry about the upstream, um, diversion affecting anything. And then you have, I mean, you have the water right there. And so all of these things, the bad thing about is, these types of, um, projects certainly aren't on, on the radar for BOR to consider. I think, it's my opinion, that that's what the cap entity's job is to do, is to say, hey, wait a minute, we want a better, we want a better project. We want a project that's more, that will fit our needs a little more holding, so...
My question was, Mr. Ceteris, was, um, these projects that we've seen through, from BOR and everything, those are, are conceptual, so who would actually choose the projects if there was a project?
The Secretary of Interior is to make contact with the cap entity. The cap entity...
The projects to the Secretary of Interior?
Well, during the agreement, the potential for a project should be identified. And, um, although they haven't been identified, a conception, a concept could be, I think that the reason for the value study, well, the Secretary of Interior wanted to know exactly what were potential alternatives that could be done. Uh, I think that, um, I think that there's a true concern from the, from the Secretary that they don't, they don't feel that Southwest communities need a billion-dollar project either. Well, I'm, I'm in agreement. Uh, most of the cost came, as we, as we discussed, um, in, uh, our, uh, discussions on Tuesday, would be a phase three project, which is, has a large reservoir, which has conveyance to, uh, into Luna County. And so those are the things that have to be considered further on down the line and we, and we already, we anticipate that and we already know that.
You know, another concern was the crossing of, of the rivers and, and, uh, you know, uh, just getting across in that, especially in that area. I, if I remember correctly, looking at the road travel management, I believe those roads are gonna be closed anyways.
I, I think you're correct, Commissioner, in that.
Out of those 2,800 miles of roads, those are, I believe, included in that. So we might not even be able to get to that recreation area anyways.
That, that proposal, I think, is, is to keep the vehicles out of the river bottom and it's that way, both on the Hila and on the San Francisco, you're correct. Are there any more questions I can answer for the Commissioner right now?
I may get tempted, so I don't know. I don't think I'm gonna go with that. No, you know, I, I guess, maybe I should wait to do this, but I don't know how long I spent with you Tuesday. It was, uh, quite a long time and our successor got really upset at me because he wanted to do something else and, and, uh, make his reporting going down the road and several other people, they chastised me for being so lengthy in my, in my questions. But a lot of the questions I asked, and I, I really wish we'd had the same group here Tuesday that we've got today. It's one of the things, because of my past two lives, being a police officer and investigator and a judge, is I always like to listen to both sides. I don't make up my mind, just listen to one person and then make a determination of right or wrong or good or bad. I always, you know, and I've gotta say this, I think it just, this is for me. As Mr. Ceteris was talking, I saw people out there laughing. That bothers me. It bothers me that the sincerity of some of you, and it was very few, the sincerity, the same sincerity I know I've had in this process, using many hours of sleep, talking to many people, many people. I've been able to have a better idea of what questions I needed to ask, even though I was meeting with Mr. Ceteris quite frequently and told him what I was hearing and what I thought was important to my constituents. I'm in District Three, the West Side. I represent a lot of coyotes out there. Brett says he represents more, but maybe not. I don't know.
I got head cheater.
You got head cheater, yeah. So, but the staff will tell you that I was negative on this for a long time until I heard all the comments. And it was made light that in fact, do we go to the table or not? If we don't go to the table, then we can walk off in the sunset, we don't have to worry about it. I will always, I spent a lot of time with myself and my family on the Hila. I feel a personal connection to it. And I don't wanna walk away from that table and leave it up to someone else that may not even be in the county to make decisions or at least have my input or the county's input on what happens. So that's the decision I had to make. If I walk away, everything would be okay, or do I, or do I go yes and become involved in the decision-making or at least have a say? That's the dilemma I've had. And I've done a lot of work on this. I did a lot of reading on this. And so, uh, that's why I'm here.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Ceteris, you know, this may not actually, may I ask this question first? Because we kind of went through it, but the, the value-added studies assume certain projects. This agreement does not bind you to any of those projects, am I correct?
That's, that's correct. But there's, there's no monetary value right at this point. I, I do have to say at this point. At some, at some point in time, the cap entity would have to enter into, uh, a project. And so, but right now, the JPA does not, does not bind you in any way, shape or form, except to, to go through, I mean, except for the language in the JPA itself.
Do the members, and I'm gonna reiterate some of the questions I asked on Tuesday, but do the parties, once they sign this JPA, does, does this JPA give them taxing authority?
The JPA does not give the cap entity any taxing authority. They don't have that authority. However, the cap entity does have, um, bonding, uh, through the Joint Powers Act and that is through revenue bonds.
Which you have to have revenue to go out and get.
Have, have revenue. And I mentioned this on Tuesday, um, and I think even somebody from the cap mentioned it earlier, in that if you don't have a revenue source, you don't get a bond. You, you can't go to the bank without any type of collateral, um, and get a loan. And so I think that that's, that's important. I mean, that's important that you can't bond without identifying a revenue source.
Do you have Mr. Assessor on that question, tax question?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Board members, not yet. Actually, uh, uh, the water would not be taxed. Uh, it would have to go out to the public, uh, for a vote and at this moment, no, it would not be taxed unless the public would vote on it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
That's a mill levy you're speaking about?
That is correct, a mill levy. And that would be the only increase, but it would have to go to the voters. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members.
Thanks for that, for that answer because I know a lot of people have been scared with the stuff that's been put out there and we want to make sure we get rid of that, uh, that sentiment.
Now, the other form of taxing authority we have since we got into that, a good segue would be, you can't hear me? Can you hear me now? You answered? No? It's on. So the other type of taxing authority that counties have, and I am correct in thinking we only have two, right? Mill levies and grocery receipts. So can you speak to what, what capacity we currently have in grocery receipts?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner. The only capacity that the, the commission has that would be without referendum, which means it does not go to the voters, is a 1/12 increment. Um, that is the only authority we have at this point in time with no referendum, which generates approximately $300,000 a year. Um, I can't speak on their behalf, but it would be my recommendation that you don't give up your one and only, um, safety net that you might have, that you might need for, for future, for future generations or for future projects. Um, so to, to address the taxation issue in here and everyone thinking that we're gonna raise taxes and if you're gonna pay for this through your taxes, the only way that would be done is if you voted for it. The county does not have the ability or the authority at this point in time to enact taxes to pay for this project. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, that does answer my question. I think the next one is, might, maybe, maybe Abby would wanna tackle this one. With the representative, if we chose to vote for this, it, on page six, um, D, I think, so it, it, it basically talks about the representative and how they get appointed to be the, the county's representative to the cap entity. So would that representative, if appointed, if we, if we agreed with this and we appointed a representative, could that representative bind the county commission to any financial support?
No, Mr. Chairman. You, the Board of Commissioners has that authority and sometimes you delegate a, a small, the 20,000 that you delegate to the county manager. My answer would be no. That representative would not have the authority to somehow sneak off and issue bonds or commit a million dollars or whatever the scenario, you would still have that control. They're just your employee.
We talked earlier, this is also for, for the attorney, we talked earlier about the eight people that have signed on. Why is that pertinent and who are they?
I have my updated list. I have trouble getting this close to me. First, I know that you are interested in who's, uh, adopted the resolution and I have gathered that information, uh, anticipating that. Of course, the ISC, uh, Katrin County, the Hidalgo Soil and Water Conservation District, the Upper Hila Irrigation Association, Fort West Irrigation Association, Hila Farm Irrigation Association, Hila Hot Springs Irrigation Association and Luna County. Those have all approved the resolution authorizing a signatory to sign the joint powers agreement. Um, the reason that is relevant is because if you look in the JPA, you know, I have trouble finding things in here. I had this page, maybe you gotta read it next. Sure, I'll do it one more time, but then if, if you, we can write it down for you too. Um, the ISC, Katrin County, Hidalgo Soil and Water Conservation District, the Upper Hila Irrigation Association, Fort West Irrigation Association, Hila Farm Irrigation Association, Hila Hot Springs Irrigation Association and Luna County.
Did you get it by that time?
Yeah, thanks.
You bet.
And I'm sure you can get a recording of the meeting. Um, the reason it's relevant is because under the JPA, it only takes three voting members, uh, to keep this thing going. So, you know, generally you only need two people to join an agreement or two entities, whatever. Um, and here, according to the JPA, you have to have three in order to have the, uh, ability to keep it going. If it's only two, it's gonna dissolve or terminate automatically. So what my point in gathering this information for the commissioners is to let you know that there are enough now to move this forward, there are enough to create the cap entity. Um, you know, uh, the next step is DFA approval, but unless DFA finds the agreement unlawful or, um, finds that it doesn't, uh, uh, excuse me, uh, comply with the Joint Powers Agreement Act, I don't see why they won't approve it. So it, it looks as if this is in motion, that we have enough parties, voting parties to create a cap entity and to, uh, govern over this diversion project. That's, that's why we keep saying, do we want a voice at the table or not? Because it looks like the ship has sailed. It looks like this is going to happen. Um, I don't know, and it's whether you, whether you agree with diversion or not, these entities do agree, agree with diversion and they have indicated that they're moving forward. Anthony, I don't know when negotiations began, was it last November on the JPA?
Negotiations began, actually, uh, they started, the first initial draft in January and, but the first time we really got a draft back from ISC was actually in February. about the first time we really got a draft back from ISC was actually in February.
So, several, several months, these negotiations have been underway. My impression is that negotiations have ended, and these entities are moving forward with or without Grant County, with or without Silver City. So, I think that's something to consider.
My next question is, is if we choose not to sign this today, what are our options after that?
You could, you still have an opportunity to join, however, the, the members that, the parties that become members prior to DFA approval will have a say over that. You will have to have two-thirds approval from the current members in order to be added after the agreement is formed. And that becomes effective when the DFA approves the agreement. So, it, it's not a done deal, that if you would like to join later, after the fact, after DFA has approved it, you will have to get two-thirds approval by the current members.
Is there any way, because I know you worked with the attorneys with the, with the ISC and with the Gila San Francisco group. Is there any way, because I've been an advocate critic of this document from the very beginning. Is there any way we can get this amended?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. It's, it wouldn't be easy. However, as you know, I didn't draft the agreement. The ISC attorneys drafted this, and I did make some recommendations on some very specific issues that I had great concerns about, which were corrected. It would take a unanimous vote of the membership of the JPA to amend the agreement. However, ISC is not a voting member. So, you may have more luck amending this agreement after it is formed than you had before. Because, as you know, there are, yes, you would have to be a party too.
You'd have to vote.
Correct.
Okay.
So, you would have to vote on whether or not this agreement would be amended if you're not a party. You also would not have a vote on which diversion project is, is chosen. Only the parties would like to have a vote.
There's been a lot of talk about the, the exit clause towards the back of it. And it talks about having to pay for anything that you've obligated, and also not, not being entitled to any refunds of any amounts that you have paid. Can you tell me how and who would obligate a commitment? We kind of went through that, but I wanted, I just want to nail that down. Is the county commission the only group that could obligate financially to the cap entity?
A little confused by your question.
Well, I want to know, if, if we get in it and we decide that we want to get out, I want to, to, I want to be assured that I haven't overobligated.
We would only be obligated to the extent we agreed to obligate ourselves, to the, to the degree that the Board of Commissioners approved it. The cap entity, I think that maybe there's some confusion about that. And I think you should review the Joint Powers Agreement Act. The cap entity will be a separate entity from Grant County and have no authority to actually bind Grant County to a financial commitment. If we did agree, you know, some strange scenario where we, we had money that we were going to pledge to pay back some bonds. If we did obligate ourselves, then yeah, we're stuck with it. Anytime you agree to pledge money.
Or dues.
Or bonds, or dues, yeah. That's why it would be important for us to be involved in writing the bylaws, to make sure that we're not, you know, committing to paying $10,000 a year for the next thousand years. We would need to be involved in that process.
And that's my statute, statute discussed earlier.
That the entities, the separation of the entities.
The statute.
Yeah, it's, it's not something you create by, create by JPA. The enabling statute for joint powers agreements says that the entity created is a separate entity from the members.
You getting anything else you want to ask?
Well, I, I don't have any, I don't have any questions, but I do want to clarify something. I have always said, I will do whatever it takes to keep the water in southwest New Mexico. I'll do whatever it takes to make sure our children have water in this area in the future. Those are things that are very important to me as a county commissioner. I want to make sure that 30, 40 years from now, people are able to open their faucets and water comes out. And I will do whatever it takes to do that. I just want to make sure I made myself clear. I didn't, I didn't say that I'd do whatever it takes to destroy that area, or to destroy somebody's feelings, or anything to that effect. But I will do whatever it takes to keep that water in this area. I know there's people waiting for us to fail so that they can take that water somewhere else. If you look to the, to the east, where one of these gentlemen came from, that commented a while ago, their Las Cruces is having trouble with their water. They owe a lot of money and water to Texas. If you look to the west, we have Tucson and Phoenix, they're, they're trying, they're wondering where, where their, their future water is going to come from. So, I want to make sure that we're able to keep our water in this southwest corner. That way, we can utilize it and prosper. And I will do whatever it takes.
Are you sure anything else? I think, I think I have one more question. There was a, a question posed by the group earlier on whether or not, I don't remember who it was, but whether or not we have the authority to represent or warranty to the ISC, whether or not we can, trying to remember the exact language they used, undertake to, bind ourselves to the terms of this agreement. Anthony, do we?
Mr. Chairman, we have the authority to enter a joint powers agreement. Is that your question?
You have anything further? You want to close for us, or?
Mr. Chairman, I guess I've spoke quite a bit, and I, I just wanted to explain to the audience, I don't have any personal gain from, I'm not a farmer, although I'd like to have a faucet in my yard because it is a closed basin in the Gila Basin. I have to have lots of things. But I don't have, I don't have no personal gain in, I represent the farmers out there in the Gila San Francisco Water Commission. And I, of course, represent Grant County. I'm appointed to this position. I try to do it to the best of my ability, just as I do every other project that I try to get myself involved in. And so, if, if people think I have personal gain, there's no personal gain. Matter of fact, it's cost me a lot of time and money. My budget wouldn't, my budget doesn't really allow sometimes for me to travel when I do that on my own dime. And so, there's really not a lot of personal gain, so I just want to, I just wanted to state that.
Okay, so, everybody's, you're good with that finished and asked questions? All right, I am too. The item on the agenda is to approve or disapprove Resolution R 1517, a resolution approving the joint powers agreement to create the New Mexico unit of the Central Arizona Project pursuant to the Arizona Water Settlement Act. What is the will of the commission?
Jim?
Yes, sir.
Make a move, or a move, that resolution, that we approve Resolution R 1517, a resolution approving the joint powers agreement to create the New Mexico unit, the Central Arizona Project pursuant to the Arizona Water Settlement Act.
Mr. Chairman, I second.
There's a motion in a proper second to approve Resolution R 1517. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. At this time, we're going to take another five-minute recess, and we will conclude with the rest of the agenda. Called back to order, the Board of County Commissioners, the regular meeting of June 25th, 2015. The next item on the agenda is the minutes. The next item on the agenda is minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of written for a regular meeting, May 28th, 2015.
Can I second? Motion second to approve the regular meeting minutes for May 28th, 2015. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Financial reports. Approve or disapprove the June 22nd, 2015 expenditure report? Lynda, can you just go over the highlights of that? We've, we've kind of been long today, so just give it in brevity.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. And this expenditure report is for a total of $2,168,284.2. And includes AP payroll, AP checks for a total of $1,738,476.74, and payroll checks for pay period 11 and 12, for a total of $429,807.28.
Thank you very much, Lynda. We went through the cash flow analysis. Does anybody need to go through that again?
No, sir.
All right. New business? We don't approve that one. Oh, did we not vote on the expenditure?
No.
I'm really trying to speak to you.
Make a motion to approve June 22nd, 2015 expenditure report.
Can I second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. We've dispensed with the cash flow analysis today. The item D, Silver Arts and Cultural District, saw the crowd and ran and asked us to table them until the July 23rd meeting, which might be just as big. So, can I get a motion to table that until July 23rd?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or disapprove the Grant County, and Grant County is acting as fiscal agent for the Grant County Health Council. Charlene went over this on Tuesday. Is there any, can we get a motion?
Make a motion to approve the Grant County, Grant County acting as a fiscal agent for the Grant County Health Council.
I second. There's a motion in a proper second to approve Grant County acting as fiscal agent for the Grant County Health Council. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Approve or disapprove the reap, reap pointment of Teresa Dalberdeen for the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the reap pointment of Teresa Dalberdeen for the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board.
Second. Motion in a proper second to reappoint Teresa Dalberdeen. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or disapprove one applicant to the Grant County at-large position for Lodger's Tax Advisory Board? We have Susan Echoff and Mark Richard.
Make a motion to approve the position, the applicant to the Grant County at-large position for the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board, Susan Echoff.
Can I second? There's a motion in a second to approve Susan Echoff as the, at the, as appointment to the at-large position of the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or disapprove two board members to the Gila Regional Medical Center Board of Trustees? Commissioner? One of you.
Make a motion that we approve the, the two, two of them, which will be the board members to the Gila Regional Medical Board of Trustees, Jeremiah, Jeremiah Garcia and Tony Trujillo.
Can I second? There's a motion in a second to approve Jeremiah Garcia and Tony Trujillo as the two new, or as one as a reap pointment and a new member to the Gila Regional Medical Center Board of Trustees. Is there any discussion on that motion?
I'd just like to say that those are probably some of the best candidates we've had, and I'm glad to see that more people are showing interest for.
Yeah, I'm glad you said that too, Commissioner, because all four of those, it's great to have citizens step forward and do that, because that's a huge task. It's a big, it's a big job, and I appreciate all four of them stepping forward.
Are you just standing there? Okay. You act like you're standing at the mic, like you wanted to say the next part. Okay. All right. Then there's a motion in a second to approve Jeremiah Garcia and Tony Trujillo. Any discussion, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or disapprove the Grant County Community Wildfire Protection Plan. Want to say something?
My name is Carol Pickering. I am the wild land wildfire person coordinator for Wind Canyon. And I am here to ask you gentlemen to please defer voting on the wildfire protection plan until next month, and leave an opening for additional community responses to the plan that has been put on the county website. I have received a lot of word from many people in the community that they've not had enough time to respond to that. And if you would be willing to let it go until next month, let it open for the public to make some responses, and perhaps ask for some changes to the plan before it is adopted.
You know, this is a living document. We adopt it all the time, so it can be changed. You, you bring it back next month with changes.
Okay, the last time it was, first brought up was 2009.
And that's just because there were no changes. If you guys desire changes, get with the Rural Fire Chiefs and the, the other entities on here, and get your, get your comments in on writing, and, and see if you can get them implemented.
We're not changing anything. The living document means that whatever you guys decide you want to try to change, you can still be changed. And then it's put in here, and, and so, you're good to go.
You betcha.
Yeah, and I appreciate the comments I got last night on my email. There were some good comments.
Okay. So, we're on approve or disapprove Grant County Community Wildfire Protection Plan.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion, we approve the Grant County Community Wildfire Protection Plan.
Second. There's a motion in a second to approve the Grant County Wildfire Protection Plan. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or disapprove donation of, oh, just move this to the end of the agenda. Approve or disapprove the donation of .918 acres of land from Friends of the Fire and Rescue Volunteers for the construction of a fire station for the Pinos Altos Volunteer Fire Department. And on there, it should say, up on LS Mesa, correct?
Yes, correct. Thank you.
So, Lucy, you want to give us the lowdown on that?
The Pinos Altos Volunteer Fire Department also includes an area of responsibility on the LS Mesa, and we really, for the Pinos Altos Volunteer Fire Department, want to have a station there, and we have the opportunity to have the Friends of the Fire and Rescue Volunteers donate that to the county, so that it would make it possible for us to build a station on that lot.
And as I read the deed, that deed would, would have a three-year reversion clause.
Can we have that access to it?
We did check the easements and the access, right?
Okay. Okay. I'd like to make a motion then, a motion, a motion to approve the donation of a 0.918 acres of land from Friends of the Fire and Rescue Volunteers for the construction of a fire station for the Pinos Altos Volunteer Fire Department.
Can I second? There's a motion in a second. There's a motion, a second, to approve the donation of land from the Friends of Fire and Rescue to the county. Is there any discussion on that? Mr.?
No, don't make a discussion.
Come on.
I had no choice. A gentleman in the back told me he had to come back and talk to me again for an hour, but I didn't.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Good job.
Yeah, are you guys all going to run off now?
Yes. We had a fire out there last night. Yes. Two, two, two incidents in a row, almost on the same day. Tuesday night and then last night, Wednesday night.
Appoint the County Valuation Protest Board. Recommendations are as follow. Paul Ciano, Georgia Barrepp, and Sylvia Mikes. Do you have anything to say about that, Assistant?
Mr. Chairman, one of you, Chairman Board Members, they've been on the board for a while, they know the ropes, and I really appreciate our county manager to put it on the agenda, and thank you once again.
You have three vacancies then?
Actually, it's two vacancies and one alternate.
And?
So do we need, we have to break those?
Or just point them all?
No, the regs do not.
Manager says point them all.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we appoint Paul Ciano, Georgia Barrepp, Sylvia Mikes to the Valuation Protest Board.
Second? There's a motion, a proper second, to appoint the County Valuation Protest Board to Paul Ciano, Georgia Barrepp, Sylvia Mikes. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Contracts and Agreement. Approve or Disapprove Agreement Number A-1512. Work and Financial Plan Between the Grant County United States Department of Agriculture, Animal and Plant Health Inspection Service Wildlife Services for Fiscal Year 16. Motion to approve Agreement A-1512. Second? There's a motion to approve Agreement A-1512. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Move to him. Approve or Disapprove Agreement Number A-1513. Agreement Between the State of New Mexico Department of Finance and Administration, Local Government Division, and the Grant County for Local Driving While Intoxicated, LDWI, DWI Grant Program.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve Agreement A-15-13.
Second? There's a motion, a second, to approve A-1513. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or Disapprove Agreement Number A-1514. Agreement Between the Grant County and Bohannon Houston Consulting Agreement for Architectural Engineering Planning Consult Services for the Airport Grant Projects. Motion to approve Agreement A-1514. Second? There's a motion, a second, to approve A-1514. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or Disapprove Agreement Number A-1515. Contract Between Grant County and North Central New Mexico Economic Development District, Non-Metro Area for Aging, Agency on Aging, Contract Number 2015-16-68047 for Direct Purchase of Services, Vendor Agreements, and Nutritional Services Incentive Program Agreement.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve Agreement A-15-15.
Second? There's a motion, a second, to approve A-1515. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or Disapprove Agreement Number A-1516. Contract Between Grant County and the North Central New Mexico Economic Development District, Non-Metro Area Agency on Aging, Contract Number 2015-16-64011 for Senior Employment Program Agreement. Motion to approve Agreement A-1516. Can I second? There's a motion, a second, to approve A-1516. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or Disapprove Agreement Number A-1517. Agreement Between the Grant County DWI Program and Chris Hildreth, DBA, the Recovery Management Center.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve Agreement A-15-17.
Second? There's a motion, a second, to approve A-1517. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or Disapprove Agreement Number A-1518. Agreement Between Grant County DWI Program for Professional Services Contract Airline, Hogland, is that, how do you say that? Arlene, Arlene? Arlene Hogland. Motion to approve Agreement A-1518. Can I second? Motion to approve A-1518. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Approve or Disapprove Agreement Number A-1519. Memorandum of Understanding Between Grant County DWI Program and the Barrett Police Department.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve Agreement A-15-19.
Second? There's a motion to approve Agreement A-1519. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or Disapprove Agreement Number A-1520. Memorandum of Understanding Between Grant County DWI Program and Grant County Sheriff's Department. Motion to approve Agreement A-1520. Second? There's a motion, a second, to approve A-1520. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Approve or Disapprove Agreement Number A-1521. Memorandum of Understanding Between Grant County DWI Program and the Silver City Police Department.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve Agreement A-15-21.
Second? There's a motion, a second, to approve A-1521. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or Disapprove Agreement Number A-1522. An Agreement for the Provision of Animal Control Services in the Unincorporated Portions of Grant County, New Mexico. Motion to approve Agreement A-1522. Second? Motion to approve A-1522. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or Disapprove Agreement Number A-1523. Professional Services Agreement with Gary Staley for Restorative Justice Program.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve Agreement A-15-23.
There's a motion, a second, to approve Agreement Number A-1523. Is there any discussion on that?
Second.
Oh, second.
That stage, okay.
Okay, yeah. Sometime we should, sometime. All those, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or Disapprove Agreement Number A-1524. Professional Services Agreement with Laura from Ramarance. How do you say that?
Ramner Ace.
Ramner Ace. Okay. For Strengthening Families Program. Motion to approve Agreement A-1524. Can I second? There's a motion, a second, to approve A-1524. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Approve or Disapprove Agreement Number A-1525. Professional Services Agreement with Robert Torres for the Strengthening Families Program.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve Agreement A-15-25.
Second? There's a motion, a second, to approve A-1525. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, into Resolutions. Approve or Disapprove Resolution R-1514. A Resolution to Enter Into a Cooperative Agreement Between Grant, the County of Grant, and the New Mexico Department of Transportation for the Improvement of Roads Within Grant County. Motion to approve Resolution R-1514. Second? There's a motion, a second, to approve R-1514. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or Disapprove Resolution R-1515. A Resolution to Enter Into a Cooperative Agreement Between the County of Grant and the New Mexico Department of Transportation for Improvement of Roads Within Grant County. Move to approve Resolution R-1515. Second? There's a motion, a second, to approve R-1515. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Motion passes. Approve or Disapprove Resolution R-1516. A Resolution to Enter Into a Cooperative Agreement Between the County of Grant and the New Mexico Department of Transportation for the Improvement of Roads Within Grant County. Motion to approve Resolution R-1516. Second? There's a motion, a second, to approve R-1516. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. DD. Approve or Disapprove Resolution R-1518. That's a budget adjustment, and I'm going to have Lynda just go over those real quick.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This resolution includes an increase in cash transfers from the General Fund in the amount of $123,154. And this will go into the debt service for NMFA loans, the GRT debt service, and for the Grant County Shooting Range. We also have an increase in revenue and expenditures, increase in revenue of $7,73,399.74. And an increase in expenditures in the amount of $8,537,868.89. And this is for the Lodger's Tax, for the Vehicle Replacement Program, for group insurance, 2015 Cooperative Agreement with the Forest Service, the Indigent Fund, the DARE Program, the Detention Center Debt Service, care prisoners, NMFA loans and lease agreements, the Hold Harmless GRT Debt Service, the Capital Projects Construction Fund, the North Hurley Wastewater System Debt Service, the 2015 Senior Services Grant, the Business Conference Grant, the Grant County Shooting Range Grant, the County Fairgrounds Livestock Building, the 2013 Emergency Management Grant, the 2014 100 Days and Nights of Summer Grant, the 2014 Stone Garden Grant. We also have an increase and decrease in revenue of $34,388. And this is for the Senior Services 2014 Grant. And then we have an intra-budget transfer in the amount of $357,603. And this is for the GRT cost of issuance, just to put it into a Hold Harmless GRT Debt Service Fund. And then the, the budget transfer within the General Fund for the Sheriff's Office, and we're decreasing it and taking it from the planning department.
Thank you, Lynda.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve Resolution R-15-18.
Second? There's a motion, a second, to approve R-1518, the budget adjustments. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or Disapprove Resolution R-1519. A Resolution asserting legal standing and formally requesting coordination status with the National Forest Service regarding the Hila National Forest Land Management Plan Revision. Motion to approve Resolution R-1519. Second? There's a motion, a second, to approve R-1519. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. F. Approve or Disapprove, this F, F, I'm, approve or disapprove Resolution R-1520. A Resolution Ratifying the Grant County Detention Center Policy and Procedures That Have Been Inplace Since 2003. We went through this with Abby and Charlene on Tuesday, so.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve Resolution R-15-20.
Second? There's a motion, a second, to approve R-1520. Is there any discussion on that motion? Gentlemen? Yes. I am not.
I snuck up on you.
You did? You're supposed to raise your hand. Wait.
I was waiting for you to look up, but.
I kind of got in a roll there.
All the guys on my shift tease me because I'm the shortest guy on the shift, so. But, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, my name is Manuel Maldonado, and I am the President of ASME Local 2516. And I'm representing your Grant County employees. Today, I'm here on behalf of Grant County Detention Center employees. A little bit of background, I've negotiated three contracts since 2009. In each contract cycle, it was brought up during negotiations that the Detention Center did not have any official adopted policies and procedures. In 2012, I was informed by Acting Jail Administrator Joseph Andozola. They were working on a policy and still waiting for approval from Grant County Attorney Abby Robinson and the Association of Counties. In 2012, Detention Center employee Gilbert Garcia was temporarily upgraded to the rank of Lieutenant for the sole known purpose of writing and revising policies and procedures. To our knowledge, this was not done. On June 12, 2015, I sent an email to Grant County Detention Center Administrator Michael Carillo requesting a current and complete copy of his agency's policies and procedures. On June 15, 2015, I received an email from Administrator Carillo informing me a copy of the 2003 Policies and Procedures Manual would be placed in my official county mailbox the following morning. I acknowledged this email. After receiving a compact disc with the promised information, I reviewed it and found that there were two separate files for policies. The first file consisted of apparent policies and/or procedures dated 2003. The second file consisted of apparent policies, procedures dated 2008. Administrator Timothy O'Neil, O'Neil's name upon, upon them stating the effective date of February 28, 2008. None of the provided policies, procedures had any documentation of having been brought before this board for review or adoption. To our knowledge, none have ever been submitted to the union and compliance with contractual requirements where applicable. On June 17, 2015, a Step 2 grievance hearing was held with County Manager Charlene Webb and Attorney Robinson. Once again, this matter was brought up to their attention. I was given a disc of policies and procedures from Administrator Carillo with the same 2003 and 2008 policies stated above. I inquired exactly which policies were being cited and used to impose disciplinary action against an employee. I again advised them the union had never approved these policies and researched this issue back to 2003 and found no documentation or indication in the county clerk's records that any such resolution had ever been adopted by this board to accept the 2003 or the 2008 policies currently being used as a basis for agency operations. Later the same day, I had a pre-disciplinary hearing with Administrator Carillo and Assistant Administrator Andozola. Once again, I advised them that their policies had not been approved by the union or the Grant County Commissioners and questioned their fidelity during this meeting. Administrator Carillo said they were working on the 2013 policies. This added yet another layer of unknown, unadopted and highly questionable policies and procedures. On June 18, 2015, I received a text message from Grant County Attorney Robinson. The message stated the following. "Hi, Manny, the 2003 SOPs I received are the current policies. It was an oversight to put the last new policies on the disc. I believe that in 2008, Tim O'Neil may have been working on revisions, but we have never implemented any 2008 SOPs, so you can just delete that file." After receiving this text, I then contacted several detention officers and requested they produce the policies and procedures that are currently issued. I was provided with the same information initially given to me by Carillo and Andozola, the supposed 2003 and 2008 policies. Whatever I received, they had received the same disc with the same policies. We now strongly suspect that no current officially and properly vetted policies, procedures exist for the Grant County Detention Facility and that no such policies are currently being developed within the state of process involving both this board and the union. We have received the same information from jail administration and the county attorney. These same highly questionable policies have been used to operate the facility and manage employees without redress with management, as the county is currently facing lawsuits and two very costly binding arbitrations for which outside private counsel has been retained. Based largely on this flawed information, we very respectfully request this board table the current motion and subject on this matter. On June 21, 2015, I filed a grievance on behalf of the union with Administrator Carillo. And some of the violations that were noted was Article 1 preamble of our bargaining unit contract, 1.2 scope of agreement during the term of this contract, the union and management. During the term of this contract, the union and management agreed to meet, confer, and resolve clarification disputes concerning the terms and conditions agreed upon during negotiations. Grant County Ordinance Number 84-09-04, Section 4 Definitions, Letter F. Collective bargaining means officially designated representatives of the, of the county government and employee organization meeting, conferring, consulting, and negotiating with one another in good faith effort to reach agreement with respect to wages, hours, and terms and conditions of employment. Section 8 Duty to Bargain. The county government and any employee organization recognized as the exclusive bargaining representative for a unit through their designated agents shall bargain concerning hours, salary, wages, working conditions, and other terms and conditions of employment not in violation of law. This duty includes an obligation of the parties to meet at reasonable times and to confer in good faith with respect to terms and conditions of employment. Section 10 Prohibited Practice. The county government is prohibited from, number 4, refusing to negotiate in good faith with the certified exclusive bargaining representative of an employee organization. State statute under PUA rules. This is the Public Employees Bargaining Act, NMSA 1978. Chapter 10 Public Officers and Employees, Article 7E Public Employee Bargaining. Statute 10-7E-4 subsection, or, sorry about that, Letter F. Collective bargaining means the act of negotiating between a public employer and an exclusive representative for the purpose of entering into a written agreement regarding wages, hours, and other terms and conditions of employment. 10-7E-19 Public Employees prohibited practice. Refuse to bargain collectively in good faith with the exclusive representative. Refuse or fail to comply with the provision of the Public Employees Bargaining Act 10-7E-1 to 10-7E-26, NMSA 1978, Board Rule. What I found in both the policies for 2003 and 2008, under purpose and mission statement, this is what they both state. This document is the Grant County Adult Detention Center's Policy and Procedure Manual. As written, it supersedes all policies and procedures that preceded the effective date of this manual. The manual in Grant County's initial attempt to assemble a comprehensive document that would provide staff with guidelines for the operation of the center. The, the, I always mess up on this word. Validity and legality of the manual was authorized with resolution and its blank, as XX-XX, passed by the Grant County Board of Commissioners at its regular meeting of month, day, year. There's no month, no day, and no year. In accordance with NMSA 1978 33-3-1, Common Jails. Operation by sheriff, jail administrator, or independent contractor. This manual will invariably have shortcomings as the manual is put into use. When these discrepancies are discovered, the modification, addition, or deletion of effective policies can only be accomplished by updates that will be drafted by and approved by the detention center administrator. Every detention officer will be made aware when modifications or changes occur. I've asked the administrator, I've asked Administrator Carillo to open a dialogue and negotiate in good faith in reference to this matter. I was referred to meet with the county manager. The policies at the detention center affect all employees who work at the agency. Many employees have been disciplined up to including termination for policies that have never been formally reviewed and adopted by the union and this board. In summary, we respectfully ask that this commission vote to table the resolution until both parties, management and the union, have reached common consensus. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey Manny, would you mind standing for a couple of questions?
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, no, never mind. I'm, I'm just gonna make a statement to the board. It's our interpretation of the union contract that management has the ability and each department has the ability to develop and adopt, or develop the policies specific for their department without the union having to approve those. Am I correct in that statement? Sort of?
Yeah, it expressly states in the contract that management has that right.
Is that even if it affects the representative employees?
Of course, all our policies, our policies.
Of course, but, but doesn't it state in the union's handbook that it shall be approved by them before?
No. No. We're required to negotiate. We're required to meet and confer on disputed contract issues, but...
Not as...
It expressly states that we, we have control over our policies. We always have. I've clarified with Mr. Maldonado what the current policies are and what they have been. And he just doesn't seem to understand.
For the decision, under terms and conditions of employment pertains to wages, hours worked, and discipline. Okay? These policies have been written in 2003 but never approved by this board, never approved by the union. There has to be an approval when it comes to terms and conditions of employment.
I believe this is an issue for our grievance, not an issue for our commissioners. I believe this is an issue for grievance, not an issue.
And as stated, grievance has been filed.
And we'll address it.
He came up like he did, so...
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, I just wanted to make the comment that we've been to multiple grievance hearings, both at Step 1 and Step 2, and to reiterate what Mr. Maldonado said, I've reviewed a number of these, and I firmly believe that in a 20-year career in public safety, I've never seen such glaring inadequacies as I have with the detention center's management operations. Their policies and procedures are inadequate. Many of their employees are continually confused. They're issued an endless stream of post-orders, memorandums. Discipline is meted out based on a number of these things that we feel are undefined. A memorandum or a post-order is not a policy. And a policy, we feel, is not a policy until it's been reviewed and duly adopted by this board. If you refer to the sheriff's department's policy manual, every one of those policies has been submitted to this board for approval. Then it's given to us. They're continually renewed. We've made multiple efforts with multiple administrations at that jail, and I don't have to state the number of issues that have come up in that jail in the last 10 years, 15 years that I've been here. We've seen administrations come and go. We've seen employees come and go. There's a tremendous turnover in employees there, and employee morale right now is about as low as, as I've ever seen it, through my involvement with the union as well as just in the public safety community within the county. So I would also urge you to table this matter for further investigation and consideration. I don't consider what's being submitted to you as a policy and procedure manual to be adequate to operate a public safety agency, given this agency's track record for over a decade. Thank you.
So, gentlemen, do you agree or disagree that in fact that's the task of management? You haven't answered, you, you know...
Please restate the question, Commissioner.
Do you agree or disagree that in fact what our attorney has said is that that's a task of management? That that's not a task that they share with the union?
Well, we interpret the contract differently, and as all of you know, when we get into splitting hairs with legal definitions, we view it differently. We view that any change in terms or conditions of employment does become a union matter.
I'd be happy to sit with each commissioner and read the express language. And whether, I don't believe that would have bearing on whether you ratified the SOPs today.
I'm sorry, yeah, you have the last part?
I just, I don't believe it would have a bearing on whether you ratified today. If you read this language and you wanted to put this back on the agenda, we can put it back on the agenda. But I don't see why you couldn't move forward today with ratifying the SOPs. They've been in place for, since 2003.
So the fair motion on the floor is to approve resolution R-1520, just so everybody's clear where we're at procedurally. Any further discussion?
Well, I mean, I'd just like to make sure that, of course, that it's legal and, and our attorney has reviewed it and...
We had a second, wasn't there?
Yes, we have. And that our attorney has reviewed it, and to go from here, I don't see a problem delaying it for future meetings. I can, I can go ahead and, I'd like to withdraw my motion.
I'll, I'll withdraw, one second.
Okay. The item on the agenda is resolution R-1520. A resolution ratifying the Grant County Detention Center policy and procedures that have been in place since 2003. We're gonna move to table it till...
Yes, sir.
You have to table it to a specific time.
To the next meeting.
So July 23. So motion to table resolution R-1520 to the regular meeting on July 23, 2015. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. And we'll stand for Commissioner comments. You're getting between me and lunch, that's all I...
I'm fine. I'm fine. I'm hungry. I'm fine, yeah.
I got, I got a couple of pages for sure.
Okay, so that's what it is.
No, we had a very tough decision today, and it was not, it was nothing easy about it. You were voting to be a part of the process moving forward or not to. I personally have run for election three times. All three times, I ran on a pro-diversion stance. This document has a lot to be desired. I do not believe it puts Grant County, its citizens, in harm's way. And the only way we can make this document better, make these projects better, is to be a part of the process. Therefore, I agree and concur with my fellow commissioners and voted yes. And at that time, it's all I have to say. So I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Say it.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.